For setting time apart to come and meet with us while we are processing this National Field and Forests Fire Amendment Bill.
Although all of us here, we are your public representatives in parliament...
As I've said earlier, we are tasked with the responsibility of lawmaking. And then, our constitution is precise on these matters. It says when we make laws in parliament... We must consult and seek your views. And that's what precisely we're doing today. And then, the law that we are seeking your views on it this time around... As already stated, is the National Field and Forests Fire Amendment Bill. Whose original main purpose is to regulate and manage field fires? We manage those by controlling their spread and by imposing obligations on landowners. And then, we expect the landowners to prepare and maintain fire breaks. This bill that we are consulting with you today, it also plays the duty on landowners to make provision for the management of primary or field fires. It also then facilitates the formation of fire protection associations by municipalities and traditional councils. It further compares municipalities and other state organs that own or manage the state land... To join fire protection associations. And when we are doing that, we are also amending the title of the principal act to the National Field Fire Act. Then owing to the fact that we have limited forests... And hence, we do not have magnitudes of forest fire as you will see in other countries such Australia and USA. And then, in the past, the country has also sent our firefighting crew from the Working on Fire program to assist in those countries. But yes, as the MMC has said... We do have frequent fire incidents that also affect our field fires. We do have frequent incidents of devastating field fires. And there are frequencies and intensities of which are expected to increase due to climate change. Which is expected to drive vegetation... Especially in our arid or semi-arid parts of the country. Of which yourself is the first state you are part of it. And when it does happen, it increases the fire risks. Particularly in those prone parts of the province. You know of late, everybody is talking about climate change. And this climate change, it increases the length and severity of fire seasons. And this happens across the entire globe. And also, the current changes in the global climate have resulted in increased periods of fire danger. And then, these changes then, it means that the fire activity is likely to increase. And we both know that persistent fire weather season could lead to more frequent severe burning conditions. And then, when it happens, it means that more areas can be burnt. And when it happens, then it shortens the fire return intervals and threatening the field vegetation. And when it happens, then it negatively affects small-scale livestock owners in our communities definitely. And we all know that as a country with had frequent episode of drought... Hence, this act because we need to regulate the management of field fires. You know field fires cause serious social, economic, and environmental damage. It is precisely for this reason that we are holding these public hearings today. To derive your esteemed inputs to formulate and promulgate a law that speaks to our local and national circumstances. Yes, that affects our, that will speak to our national and local circumstances. Having said that, I want to welcome you all to this gathering. And then, thanks you once more for coming in these big numbers. Especially on a Saturday morning. We don't take it for granted. I'll therefore hand over to my colleague, Honorable TB Vmchunu, to talk to you through the procedures that you are going to follow in making the oral and written submissions.
Humble greetings to the Chairperson, Honorable Ntambi. And the honorable members of the Portfolio Committee of Forests, Fisheries, and Environment. The Speaker and the MMC of Maluti Apofun municipality. Traditional leaders that are present here. And the people and the residents of Tabo Mafusanyane District. We appreciate your presence. And take it as a very important gathering today where we are here to listen. We are the government of the people by the people, hence we are here to listen to the people in the amendment of the bill. My duty is so simple, is to tell you the procedures that would be followed. We are here to listen to the community. So you will be given an opportunity to do oral submission. You also have an opportunity to do written submissions. You can do oral submission and also hand over your written submission to the committee secretary, Chilega. You will be given a chance, there will be at least ten hands at a time, you will raise your hand and the chair will give you the opportunity and you will come and sit on these seats that are in the middle. When you come to the podium, you are expected to first introduce yourself. And indicate to us whether you support or not support the bill. Then you will present your oral submission. At least for five minutes so that we can all get the opportunity to talk. Where we started yesterday, Honorable Speaker... The community were raising different issues. We did not block them, but we tried to control so that we focus on the issue of this amendment and also on the issue of the field fires in particular. Hence, we appreciate your presence and the MMC. So we will allow each and every person to raise, you can raise the issue as an individual or as an organization. It can be a political party or a civic organization. It can be the traditional healers or the traditional leaders. Or farmers, or ever that feels that they have a contribution to make. So you are all free to make contributions, but remember to introduce yourself and indicate whether you support or you don't support the bill. The written submissions can continue to be submitted to the committee secretary, there is a form, there is a form in that is in these documents that you can just use to do your submission also. If you don't have the form, you can contact Chilega to assist you. Thank you very much, Honorable Chairperson. So you've heard what my colleague have said. I think let's do it this way. We are going to start from this block. From the front row, whoever want to speak up to the number ten, can you start taking the first chair going back, then I'll follow that row. Can I see people moving, until you are ten, I'll see where you ended, then I'll call the next group. There we go, we are doing it so orderly. I think, yeah, the chairs are not yet turned, do we have, still have people who want to speak from that side? Okay, those that column make it to the number ten, I'll start with you. Okay, you've heard what my colleague have said, you must first introduce yourself. And then, deal with the matter, we need to know whether you support or not. Yeah, so, somebody is still writing, okay, she's done, the podium is yours, my sister.
Good morning to all the attendees, I would like to give thanks to the delegation from the National Assembly. Economic Empowerment NPC. I'm from the organization called Bashebeti Empowerment NPC. I represent workers of that organization. I support the bill, the amendment of the bill. We acknowledge and we appreciate what is being done for Tavo Mufuzanyani and particularly Maluti Apofun. The only thing we would like to bring to your attention, I think because I'm not qualified enough to say whether it will be part of amending, but it is just to bring awareness and to broaden the information that we as residents need. In Maluti Apofun and Tavo Mufuzanyani as a whole... We have a problem of aggressive invasion plants that no one is attending to. I meant aggressive plants. And then, our people are people of non-technological things. Our people don't respect our natural resources, when they see a tree, they see firewood. And then, also in that, it has also brought to the drought that we are currently facing. And then also, what we have is waste pickers that are not developed or empowered whereby illegal dumpings could have been part of alleviating such problems as field fires. Also, we would like to ask that the municipality, the district, and the local, they get to empower people according to their objectives, not because of political affiliations or according to personal preferences, rather focus on objectives. And then, we would also like, when we go to the offices, let us be referred to proper officials or officers instead of being driven up and down and going from pillar to post until you get results and get recognition of a concept that you see and you have been on the ground and you know that it will eventually empower people, but because you are not politically affiliated or the officials don't prefer you, you are being sidelined and it doesn't empower anyone. And lastly, I think if the municipalities and merchants were to collaborate with civil organizations... We would also be able to implement the corporate social responsibilities from our merchants because our communities contribute so much to them, but yet as Maluti Apofun, I don't see any benefit because I'm a resident here, I was born here, I've lived here all my thirty-four years, I've never seen CSR being implemented in a community I live in, I thank you. Thank you. This is what we call active citizenry. Thank you. And I wish you ten...
Greetings to Honorable Chairperson and the leadership that is there. My name is Mahase Mahase Pita from Batroqua Bamota constituency. I support the bill. I also want to give the current municipality an applaud. The community of Maluti Apofun here is in good hands. Under this municipality. Let God bless you. The only thing with the bill is, which is running short of, is the penalty part. For their own doors or the culprits. When you look here, you find that the way, how desperate we are about the field fires. The time is overdue. For the damage that has been done. The bill supposed to have long been done. But with us, that we are going to resolve the current problems. And our government. Thank you.
Thank you so much, much appreciated, and that feedback is also welcome. Okay, you can proceed. My name is Pusele Tomofukeni. I'm the provincial secretary for Contralesa. As Contralesa, we have few, we support, we support firstly, we support the bill. But we have concern with some issues. Especially when it comes to arrests. Contralesa, I would like to know why will it be expected that a traditional leader be equal to an officer when it comes to arrest? Is it because it is assumed or known that traditional leaders don't have staff? Again, what is the rationale behind that the bill should say traditional leader, but when it affects the department, it says an officer? We think this must be attended to. Contralesa would also like traditional leaders to be given the principal act or all acts that has been referenced here. As it is known, traditional leaders don't have resources. It shouldn't be assumed that traditional leaders has those acts or have access to those acts. Shortly, Contralesa would ask to be given time after being given those acts. To seek legal opinion and submit later.
Really do have a major increase in fires and what we experience is that certain landowners do, does not have the financial capability. To prepare fire breaks. To have firefighting equipment. All being trained to combat fires. Um, the northeastern Free State um recently um got um um recently um started operating in um the western part of Malutia Pofun. So um that, that's all of my concerns at this moment. Thank you very much.
Before you go, before you go, can you get clarity on this list? Who's the lessor? It's the municipality.
The municipality owns the property. Um, um, how can I say it's Platteberg, the mountain there in Irish Smith. The property is being leased to, towards a specific entity.
By the municipality to the specific entity? There's non-compliance with the acts. And then the lessi, the lessi as well is not complying with the lease agreement when it comes to fire breaks. I hope the leadership of the municipality led by the speaker and the MMC are here were going to then follow it up and refer back to you because it's a clear threat forward matter that need to be attended. And thanks for bringing it to our attention. Then you're playing your part because you know things, you want things to happen. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you Parliament Leadership in front of us. And all the leadership that is here. My name is Hadebe Tieto. I'm representing Fatensin to Common Age. I'm the member of Fatting Unemployment Group. We fully support the bill in front of us. Of the law. We only want to make a few comments. We need the firefighting uh offices to be nearer to the units. We need not to be charged when we need the firefighters. We also need training. Of how to deal with fire in our local communities. In our community, in our. In our communities, we need. In our communities, they must be part of uh the firefighters.
The committee in Sarona, Sarozi, Sar di Ma, Sar di Common Age. The committee in Sarona.
In our committees. Of the common ages. We need the fire departments to be there. To be available. After there's been fires, we need support like maybe being given food parcels or food. As I'm staying in Fatensin too. It's along the national road. We've got big challenges because that's where the fires start. We would like to always see those contracts or projects that are dealing with fires to be seen always like now. We don't see anything happening there. As I conclude, I would like to strengthen the bill with this issue. To give or to met out heavy sentences or fines against those who are causing the failed fires. Thank you. Thank you very much, sir, Mr. Hadebe.
Uh, I want to challenge my colleagues from the local. I know the district is not represented. Uh, the issues raised by Intate Hadebe. It's posing a challenge to all of us. How functional is our district development model? Because we know that firefighting services lies with the districts. But in terms of your IGR, I think MMC and speaker, you can see this gap and this is the matter that you need to follow up. We're going to follow up with yourselves as well because. It's a consequence of public eh hearings. We don't leave things unattended. At some point today, Hadebe will ask them to come and account on those issues. All the issues that are being raised that are competency of the local, the district and the province were noting them. Because my dear councillors, if you know that area where she's staying is prone to fires and then now he comes here and say when those fires break, we are not getting support. Then something has to be done. It means then our district development model is not functional and the issue of our IGR. And it's the duty of a ward councillor to coordinate and facilitate all those sector departments. I can assure you it's a matter we're going to follow up. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry to take your time. Proceed.
Greetings to the committee. Greetings to the community at large. My name is Chano Sleppe. I stay in the rural areas around here. Oh farms indeed. As we enter the winter season, we are having a problem in terms of fires that are coming in the farms. What causes this problem? It emanates from the electric cables. Where you experience a huge winds around Ocast whereby these electric cables, they are certain, they are intertwined and they cause these uh failed fires. We cannot be able to curb the fires because they are coming in a huge speed. Where I stay, I'm staying in a mountainous area whereby if these fires are coming, they come in a, in a very, very, very high speed. In two thousand and six, I lost a lot of cattle together with sheep because of this havoc. Uh, I did not get any assistance. I will be able if there can be some plans that can be made, especially if you look at the issue of electric cables that causes these fires. We would like to get assistance because even the grass that the cattle grazed, it, it is destroyed. We would like to get urgent assistance in this matter. I thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much. Can I check with the municipality? Is it in the Escom area or the municipality supply electricity? Where you saying it's coming from? It's the farms, farms reticulated. The municipality is not providing electricity to, to the farms. It's Escom area. So we all agree that we need to raise this with Escom. Okay, Chileca, just get the direct location and the address where it's actually coming from. Okay, thank you.
Greetings everyone from Parliament and leaders of Malutia Pofun. My name is Benjamin Lishwena. I'm from Fatensin to in Polru. I'm one of the members of the, the Animal Common Age and also in other organization. I, I, I want to have my input regarding this bill. I wa, I just want to bring the Parliament's attention that in Polru, there is, there are some uh grass that, that has not been cut along the highway. All, all these other years, uh the work has, has been done. But for this year, nothing has been done and we already see children are starting to cause fire. Even in, in, in the, in the local, we don't have our common age and then we struggle with our animals? Once the, once the fire has burned, our animals have nothing, have nothing to eat and even the area is becoming scarce because they are building houses. My one re, my other request is what should we do when you find a person causing fire? Is there any fine for such a person or will I be protected by the law if I take the law into my own hands if I find someone causing fire? As I conclude. We, we fall under Bethlehem. I would like, I would like for Polru to have its firefighting office because when there's fire, it takes a long time for Bethlehem firefighters to get to Polru. They even charge you if you call them. That's my request. Can Parliament please assist us? Thank you.
And then what I've picked up, you want to be given power to deal with those offenders.
Yeah, because once I catch him, then I, I won't be protected. Then I will take the person to, to the police station. We need, we need protection in that case. Because I also am protecting the environment.
Fair enough and so profound, really. Next.
Greetings.
I want to thank Parliament for your presence here. Traditional leaders in Malutia Pofun. I'm Kinna Majuro from Fatensin too. I submit the bill that we, is being discussed here. However, it shouldn't only be about the environment. We also have problems with fire in our houses. Because it is even a problem to, in our household to, 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 to own a fire extinguisher. Maybe if Parliament can agree that uh for at least hundred people, there should be one fire fi, fire extinguisher that would rotate among households. Lastly. At least if, if, if there, there would be a district app. Where we would communicate to find out how other people have, have resolved their issues. That would be of great assistance to fighting uh failed fires. The, the department should also have projects whereby the youth can get jobs. Thank you.
Okay, we're moving with time. District app. Yes, it's fair enough. That's constructive.
Greetings, ma'am. Hope you are all well. I'm Morena Enes Tmuloi. From Machulukue in, next to Harris Smith? In Malutia Pofun. I would love to be brief. Or SS Holukue Council will submit a written submission as well. The first issue is on page three. Where it talks about regional councils. Where it's defined as Regional Leadership and Finance. We, we hope now it's called Traditional and Kuisan Act.
With that clarity. Since this bill was done before the new act was amended by the uh then was also signed off as law by President. And it's a sign that Morena has read the documents.
Let me go. On page four? Where it says uh traditional leaders have, have a right to arrest a person? What will our protection be as, as the traditional leaders? If a person has been arrested? And then we supposed to go to court? Which act will we be using by law? Because the police will be using their powers as police? Because they have the right to arrest the person? Which, as, as traditional leaders, which act will protect us? The other issue? Morena Mahase has already lamented on that one. It's about penalty. I, I won't talk much about it. I, I want to request from our municipalities. From uh the district and the local municipality. That when they make their bylaws. They should align themselves with the bill. It shouldn't just be a bylaw that is being written down. And not be implemented. As I am about to conclude. Once we have made our submissions as traditional leaders. Let us not be used as rubber stems. We have learned a lot. About this hearings that are taking place. Where we submit. Once the bill has been signed into act. Whatever that we have, we have proposed does not appear anywhere in the act. And then that gives us, we, we feel that we, we are, we are being taken that we agreed through everything that was being said. Let, let me thank our white farmers. Here locally. They always support us when we experience fire. So I will request Malutia Pofun. And the district as well. They do that using their own money. I, I hope Intate. Intate Bennett will agree with me. They use their own resources to, to dis, extinguish the fire.
Issue is Black Mountain.
The issue of Black Mountain.
Black Beck.
Black Beck Mountain. That Intate Bennett talked about. Municipa, I, I think municipality is well aware of it. Because the person that is involved. We as the traditional leaders are also complaining about him. Because he calls himself uh Morena, uh Machulukue traditional leader whereas he is not. He is the one who's in charge of the whole land there. As I conclude. We will support the bill. Only if our, our proposals are considered. Thank you.
Okay, as you're sitting down. Uh, this uh section two A.
Section A and A two A.
That you refer to on page four. It's empowering you, Morena. So that you must arrest. And then it further says that you are going to be trained. And to be competent. And then that will be in line with the police act. So you'll be. So it's going to become an enforcement officer as well with full powers like a police. But otherwise, the other issues that you've raised. The resin for public consultants and the colleagues are here will remind each other to say these are the things that we raised in the public consultations. That's why we've just received valuable contributes contribution. All the ten people or more that have spoken. Is there anyone left from this side who wants to come? Silence, can I get speakers from this side? Just stand up and come and occupy the seats. The stool are still, the chairs are still there? Yes, those that missed it, they can go to the next round. Okay, we're still doing the admin, quickly then we proceed.
With great humility, I would like to greet the commu- eh the committee led by Honorable Mutambi. Greetings to the traditional leaders who are amongst us and also greetings to the community of this municipality. My name is Inoki Tlamlangeni from?
Intabaswe in Harris Smith.
From Intabaswe in Harris Smith. Indeed, we are happy eh we feel ecstatic when we see the Parliament coming down to us as the people. Firstly, as the Maibuya Community Organization from Intabaswe. We have registered as a nonprofit company. I would like also to applaud applaud the municipality here in Maluti Apofun. We work hand in hand with this with this municipality. We support the bill wholeheartedly and also we have acknowledged that there are some amendments that have been made on the bill. Eh we are grateful that also as community organizations in the township or in the community, our role has been acknowledged on the bill. We are saying forward to the move that the protection associations should be included in the bill, we support that notion. Eh Intabaswe Harris Smith. Indeed, in Tabaswe eh community, there's a lot of damage that has happened in the last twenty-one years. The Intabaswe Township was established in nineteen fifty-nine, but now when you look around, there is a lot of informal settlements eh that are surrounding the area, left, right and center. Eh because it's a winter season, then we normally use eh a certain way whereby we we combine the wood so that when we can be warm and also that process causes failed fires in the process. These shacks are closer to the national road referred to as N three. As I'm saying, it's a winter season eh the failed fires eh must roam eh at any time. Eh I support also Mister Bennett when he's talking about. Eh that place was leased to us and is our traditional area where we live in. Eh as you know eh Mister Shembe was born from that area. Eh the municipality leased that land and it was privatized. As a result, we can't be able to perform our annual prayers in that area. It nowadays it referred to as a game reserve. As a result, people are busy now eh cutting out the trees and the area now is exposed, but in eh in the past, you could not be able to recognize when we're performing our prayers during the time of Shembe. We were removed from the old township of Komplaz and were taken to Intabaswe eh were removed eh were evicted actually. That area doesn't belong under municipality and the people now are able to to actually cater for their cattle in that piece of land. We want the municipality to intervene because also the fires that are coming up are closer to the national roads. So we do trust that the municipality will be able to make some corrections in that place. Eh the natural foreigners are causing trouble because even the shops eh they are being bent eh so I can't I can't say a lot, a lot has been said in that regard. They use that particular shop, they sleep there, they cook there, that is why they sometimes they you find that there are fires that are coming. I thank you, Honorable Chair.
Yes, we've heard you. You've raised valid union points. Thank you so much. Over to you.
Greetings to the leadership in front of us from Parliament and the leadership from Maluti Apofun. Greetings also to all the traditional leadership that is in here from different parts of this place. My name is Malifanes Koboto, I'm a resident here in Maluti Apofun. I am a member of the Contralessa in many ways that he has explained. I'm representing MEF, Maluti Apofun. Environmental Forum. I initiated SEP.
River Cleaning Project.
The River Cleaning Project. As that said, Forum will completely support this bill. We've got a few contributions to mention here and we'd like those contributions to be taken seriously. When it comes to the bylaws. Eh I hope that these bylaws or the responsibility to implement them could be given to the Forum because the municipality is the one that is transgressing these bylaws. In these traditional leadership councils. The in our traditional leadership council, we've got people who are doing dual jobs in inside the the council of the traditional leaders and the municipality and the municipality is not aware of this. I. I hope when this law is being passed, all the stakeholders can be part of the the implementation of this law. And when it comes to the prevention of failed fires, I hope that. We need the village champions and mountain champions. We we also wish that they can be allocated some funds so that they can carry out their duties accordingly. As I conclude. As the leader of SEP. We had a request from our municipality that as we clean the rivers, whatever that we're taking out of that. We need a site to recycle all those things because we don't want to make the environment dirty or pollute the environment. As usual, we made that request in January, but up to this day, we are being sent from pillar to post, there's no response. I hope that as the speaker is here, may he please note this and then we can make another presentation to him. Not, I'm not bypassing the MMC on top. Eh I would like also to make him aware that we've got the three royal kingdoms or four royal kingdom, five royal kingdoms in Maluti Apofun, you can mention them. The Koisan is one of those. Thank you.
Thank you so much, it's much appreciated. And then you have raised something that is also innovative. The mountain champion and the village champion. These are very creative ideas that we don't take for granted.
Thank you very much, sir.
My name is Sipo. My name, my other name is Christopher Hatede. I am coming from Harris Smith. Oh, I'm coming here to actually give a comment regarding our municipality in Maluti Apofun. Oh, actually, I'm greeting greetings also goes to the community here in Maluti Apofun. All my contribution is this. Eh I would like to engage the safety and security MAC of this municipality, Maluti Apofun. We have schools and our children are about to close go for holidays here in June. Our children are roaming around and they are busy burning eh the the failed. We like our children to be educated so that they cannot cause the failed fires, we want that specific education on our children. Also, we like our parents who stays in the township to be educated on this matter of causing failed fires. I've worked eh immensely with eh in the World Committee with the councillors. If you speak to the parents who are having these kids. If you speak to the parents who are having these kids.
Otke na manjo, sokabene, na bazali.
You end up, eh, being in conflict with them because you are trying to caution them about this issue.
Especially, abo mama.
Especially their mothers.
Angfunu kukbareke, lo, angfunu kukonda ngko.
Eh, I want to be direct on this matter.
Mama, ngbona, unatuwa, opeta yonke, le kabene teda, ufunu kukomtisau kuwe ngko.
Eh, Honorable Chair, I want to be direct to you because it seems as if you are the leader of this delegation.
Abo mama, bana mandla, bana yonki, into fana, by sebenzes.
Women have got a will and they've got the power to do or change things around.
Nala abantuana bitu, chesi bana democrats, banga lungiswa, yiba, abo mama.
Women can be able to correct our children on the correct path because our children are saying, no, we're living in democracy, we can do as we want.
Ngoba tinabo baba, asana, o mapowers.
We as men, we don't have powers as women.
Go, kesa sekla, tala, uko, mama, uko sa yonka, lentro, ilunge.
We are all delegating our powers to the women so that things can be right.
Mlabe, kule, democrats, kunemte tue, ngalche, ishi njuwe, uko ti, tinatis ngabo baba, sibe na wa, amandla, kutlezi ngani, simgetisa kanjani, kuze. Ngoba ma, ngikuze, ngonsitela, utu ma, obaba, kuyala nyanga.
Eh, we would like, through this democratic dispensation, as men, we would like to be given powers so that when we correct the children to say, what you are doing is wrong. We don't want women to go behind our backs to say, no, your father, eh, is, is really, really not doing things okay.
Ni kula lele, mama, maloku kuru, ma uko ti lafa, maloku, shu, ti lau sebenza no bani, lau sebenza no bani, lonow yin, neswana.
I've here, I've heard you saying, yes, I work, eh, with so and so and we are working well together.
Entesifuna yo mama na, ku ba holybe.
All that we want from our leaders.
Is communication.
Is communication.
Uko shoni pana.
To respect each other.
Ogunyangza kaza, umuti, anga ati ngoba, opeta, une position, abesetena, is a king.
Eh, we would don't want people to abuse their positions of power.
Yikokmosa yonka, lentro city government, yeto, ayenzi luto.
That is why now things are not going alright because people are abusing their powers and we end up, eh, losing faith in our government because things are not going right.
Ange, eme muting, joba ngimutungza, bamfisho, ngpela la la ngaiabon.
I'll be prepared.
Nkoli se, eh, i, kunato, beseni ishiile, se, oto, beseni ishiile, nklis, isi, i, i, bili le, angase, ngani, kama percenta, angakanabi. Mtlabe, angata, kit hundred percent, times hundred percent, times hundred percent, ngzabangi ndiye.
Chair, it must be noted, I support the bill all heartedly.
You got overwhelmed and forget to support the bill, eh? Eh, the message, as mothers are spoiling their children not to protect our environment.
Mola, etza, e ru, mona, koru, ro, nabomere, te fisaba, na, ibe, araba, halime, likatwanee.
And it's time we give the fathers that power back.
Kenakwa, rene, hemu nyetla, o, bonita.
But I'm happy that, Hathebe, you've raised the critical issue that our service members of parliament, we've been sharply raising this issue of the environmental programs being part of the curriculum.
Kalebo, antate, Hathebe, kadi tla iso, za, how, za, reseka, tutu, na ya, thokomela, tikulu, eka, ba, ka, holo, ya, di tutu, za skulu.
Now, when we meet and interact with people all the time.
Haran, zerikopa, na, lebatu, kadi nakuzole.
We get empowered and my colleagues and I, we are being empowered.
Refuma na, chabolo, ebo, basebeti molle, namona, lebo, na, ba fumane, seyo.
And we want to thank you for that.
Merabatla, holebuwa, kaseo.
Yeah, I think the time we leave this hall will be different people altogether.
Na konye, ra tla be, resia, holoena, ra tla be, relebatu, bafi, tuhile, nka, hulle, hul.
And so we don't take you for granted.
Mehe, hara lechelle fati.
Next.
Okatsalapi.
Eh, ki. Kilebu e, na koina, ki fumanin.
I would like to appreciate the opportunity afforded to me.
Kidumedi se, wetapile vaka, kapile kamo, no, za parliamente.
To greet all my leadership there in front from parliament.
Le marena oje, atinka, ru, butulolisa vaka.
And all the traditional leadership that is in here.
Eh, kitete wehla, ba, garo, Maludi Apofun.
I'm also appreciating the fact that I'm part of Maludi Apofun.
Na, kalibizo ki, nokufa kanyee.
My name is nokufa kanyee.
Ki tomani, Bethlehem.
I come from Bethlehem.
Ki wot coordinator.
I'm the wot coordinator.
Ki tulemo na, ka, ishi ya hori, oh, ki, sapet, ki, aski se, anyan, ki support the billi.
I support the bill.
Eh, ishiaka, iki na, na, banu, besu, hansi, vidi tifat, man, kutule, ki, tsenyili, anyanya, na, kela, kantansi, buya, mona, marak.
As I was sitting down, I got concerned about something that has been said here.
Kidula mi kukuku.
I'm staying in informal settlement.
Bo tata, kore, Maria Jena.
The problem in the winter season.
Kalaeta, eh, di gerese.
We are using candles.
Ki parafini.
Parafin.
Kedla meho, zoro, no, wala.
We must go out to collect the firewood, so.
Ha hova, le mollo, uko so, ngi gerese.
If there can be fire started by that candle.
Ka, bayona, parafini, ewo.
Or that parafin.
Iba ma tata, ama ngahu.
There start a very big problem.
Ibile, renalidi, lati, hadi, zeka, ana, ka, hara, umori, du la, ndinga, baning.
And also.
Maspala, how, etlo, tu sa.
We've got overgrown grass and the municipality is not assisting us to cut off that grass.
Jale, kana koina, banu besu, tenzat, otoko, banu, ma tata, ilisanzat, uka, la, baning, jumbo, omel.
In this season now, we're going to face very difficult times because also the grass is dry.
Banava, na, senzat, ba, du, kala, ba, chi sa, jang, hamol, ba, du, babo, na, ba, ha, ba, zoma, ndibia, mona, ba, 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 yu, horela, ona, molon, au, futuma, la, ka, o.
So these kids and together with their parents in the evenings, they, they light the fire and warm themselves there.
Bo tata, bo, ngapeto, ba, bo, na, bu, na, hore, ha hucha, kidiya, otola, tu sa.
Another problem will be, once the failed fire starts, it takes long for us to get assistance.
Ibile, kitoko pa, hapo, ha, renere, ha, maspala, waru, na, nu, ka, tu sa, retole, training, oba, chava, timba, sa, sebe, zinkha, ro.
May the municipality also train the youth that is available in our communities.
Or, kana koina, e mollo, ita, be, kala, kaya, na.
So that in this season of the failed fires.
Ba, kono, tu sa, na, hamol, o, ocha, tu sa, la, jang, oba, tu, ha, kono, tu sa, molon, uti.
The youth can assist to extinguish the fire.
Eh, ngu hapo, ki na, na, re, 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 kai, kai, tu sa, kaya, na, ha, holo, ki, na, na, re, ba, chava, na, na, ba, feli, training, mahala.
These youth must be trained without any fee as from them.
Ha hulu, hulu, kona, ba, tu, mama, plus, baning.
Especially us from the farming communities because.
Yonan, tu, ki, jang, hamu kukuku, cha, wa, ne, su, hu, tata, ro, kati, maka, medifene.
When a shack is burning, it's not easy to just use water to extinguish the fire.
Wa, how, tima, kama, medifela, netifela, molon, no, zwa, ta, ulongo fita.
Because when you, you only use the water, you are perpetuating the fire and sometimes a person can lose their life or his life.
Ki ratili, ishi, anyan, nta, teli, ngabo, re, di fire extinguisher, zena, kadi, kaba, ten, huruna.
I also support the contribution by the previous speaker that in, i, if we can have some fire extinguishers among the communities.
Jolo ka, mo, zulu, mi, nyanya, na, ha, ona, le, uwa, ka, baze, perini, na, tu sa, kapili, nyana, hamon, lolite.
As we are small communities, if we can just have two, eh, tho, those two can assist in case there's a fire.
Kaliboa, holi, kile, wili.
I'll appreciate that a lot, thank you very much.
Very constructive input.
Kalebo, akatsa, elo, e, ahang.
Trying to bring solutions.
Eh, lili, kautli, sa, di, tarolo.
It's a pity our colleagues from the local and the district, they are not here.
Kabo, ma, dima, be, ba, ofisi, riba, local, ele, ba, district, iha, ba, yo, kamona.
But I think we'll convey the message to them.
Mpa, iti sepa, ra, tla, ba, fiti, se, zamola, etza.
Because all of us seated here were your public representatives.
Obani, jolo ka, hara, diti, mona, ka, fela, re, ba, e, me, di, basi, chab.
Okay, over to you.
Okatsalapi.
Kialibo, kile, wehla, mu nyetla, ku, fumanin.
I appreciate the opportunity afforded to me.
Kilebu, se, parliamente, eseeza.
I also appreciate what the parliament is doing.
Kalibizo, ki motamaipele.
My name is Motamaipele.
Ki, zua, Setoto Municipality.
I come from Setoto Municipality.
Ki, eme, mona, ki, wizika, di, bazim, malo, anyana.
I'm here with a few caps.
Eh, kia, ki chairperson, eh, Communist Party, Setoto, eh, Tlokalani.
I'm a chairperson of the Communist Party in Tlokalani.
So it's fixed back, eh?
In, in Tlokalani, yes, it's part of Fixback.
Okay.
Eh, Tlokolani, eh, ki, sohai.
I'm also a farmer.
Make a chairperson, eh, Setoto Land Care.
I'm also a chairperson of Setoto Land Care.
Eh, haki, sheba, malawona, ki, bona, acte, na, ya, one oh one, eh, nineteen ninety eight.
When I look at this act, one oh one of nineteen ninety eight.
Kia, chale, nya.
It's very old.
Mpa, ki, ki, ba, tla, ki, buya, katsela, kena.
This is how I want to put it.
How sheba, tabenyadi, fire breakers.
When you look at the issue of fire breakers.
Eh, hote, moga, mobu, ki, na, tla, be, ngonkabika, rabe.
The sole responsibility is for the, is on, of the, the owner of the land.
Bo, holo, ba, du, hai, di, hiri, le, mobu, wa, maspala, le, wa, komoneji, le, communal land.
Most of the farmers are leasing on komoneji, or, what, linka?
Komoneji, le, communal land, kile, nyana, mobu, amare.
Komoneji and communal land on the land of the farm, of the traditional leaders.
Mpa, renale pepezu.
But there's a challenge.
Re, re, hiri, le, mobu, o, re, du, hai, te, iti, ka, mpa.
As we are leasing on those lands as the upcoming farmers.
Harana, di, sebe, di, swakapa, te, ka, tibe, la, mol.
We don't have the resources for fire prevention.
Eh, lebo, maspala, habana, zuo, na.
Even the municipality doesn't have those resources.
Obana, how sheba, uti, bo, maspala, ba, ya, kadi, kategori, hori, ba, fe, di, di, fire brigade, iti, kapadi, nto.
Because you are told that the municipalities are categorized in order to have some resources and responsibilities.
Make it, tlo, ba, broko, bani, hadi, na, di, sebe, di, swazee, no, bo, maspala.
This is really giving us sleepless nights because we don't have those resources in the municipalities.
Eh, how sheba, hona, li, illegal dumping site.
There are also illegal dumping sites.
Seo, di, kana, ki, bo, maspala.
That are run by the municipalities.
Me, letale, ntsarela, haki, re, ekare, rumela, thokolo, si, homolo.
Please pardon me if I'm misinterpreting everything.
Katsela, kena.
In this way.
Billi, esha, ba, du, hai, esha, ba, tu, ba, tla, as.
Billi is against the farmers or people who are still striving or struggling somehow.
Mpa, how sheba, government, ya, ro, na, kapadi, sector, akapa, all spheres of government, they fail to implement, sewa, and receives.
But when you look at all the spheres of government, they are failing to do what they are ordering us to do.
Obani, ha, ebare, tla, me, abili, na, how sheba, di penalties, li, di kategori, za, di penalties.
When you look at the penalties and the categories.
Re, kama, ntsoma, ni, reta, me, re, inke, S members of the public, re, inke, bo, maspala, hoya, di court.
Who, S members of the public were supposed to take the municipalities to courts.
Obana, ha, ba, iti, molao, Sebasti, bembasi, it.
Because they are not doing what they are supposed to be doing.
Eh, di, 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 fire belt, iti, ba, ndin, tse, la, ya, eh, mion, ya, komoneji.
The, the fire, what?
Di, di, fire, eh, belt, iti, tamen, di, etu.
The, the fire belts that are supposed to be made.
Eh, hadi, biti.
They are not there.
Mollo, ola, komoneji, ha, hold, oya, di, commercial farmer.
Most of the fires are from the komonejis to the farming communities.
Me, re, kete, la, ba, ro, na, ba, koso.
Then will be accused.
Pepezu, akaki, na.
Yes, my suggestion.
Hara sheba, bo, unto, project, ya, working on fire.
When you look at the working on fire project.
Itu sa, ki, government.
It's assisted by the government.
Mpa, ha, mollo, ocha, komoneji.
But when there's fire in the komoneji.
Rabali, challenge, u, bani, ba, recharge.
We have a challenge because they are charging us.
Me, ki, po, so, kor, re, kana, kou, we, hono, hono, ni, di, projects, nse, ba, ya, di, commercial farmer.
But there are other projects that have been going to the commercial farmers.
Senen, zwa, di, tu sa, ma, rabashule, tu sa, ba, tu, a, fita, ne, le.
They have been helping but them, but they fail to help the poor people.
Eh, renale pepezu, me, fe.
We have a challenge, me.
Billi, hadi, etu, ha, wele, awareness, eh, di campaign, iti, na, for, hoya, grounding.
There are no, 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 no enough, um, awareness campaigns, eh, into the communities.
Obani, departmente, ya, environmental affairs.
Because this is the Department of Environmental Affairs.
The departmente, se, di.
And other departments.
Di, ba, li, di, projecte, iti, di, iti, differente.
They, oh, oh, mostly have different projects.
Mpa, di, shebi, nditwe, le.
But looking at one point two.
Eh, rabali, challenge, ya, hori, how we, eh, diste, kula, sena, di, li, ting, za, all the department.
We have a challenge of not having the original or the former stakeholders who were there in, initially.
More, renen, ridula, restla, ridula, ting, rebonsa, di, pepezu, te, ting, on the ground.
Where we used to sit and discuss the challenges on the ground.
Hadi, sebe.
Those are not working.
Eh, how sheba, hona, le, eh, Kahara Land Care, hona, le, Junior Land Care.
Kahara?
Kahara projecte, ya, Land Care, hona, le, Junior Land Care.
In the project of Land Care, there's another project of Junior Land Care.
More, renen, ru, daba, na, hori, na, ba, thokomela, tla, ujol, li, daba, za, environment.
Where we were educating kids about environmental care.
Eh, daba, edinvesive plants.
The issue of the invasive plants.
Kitwe, tama, shalaka, slambos.
I'll make an example of, of.
Slambos.
Slambos.
Ki, tlo, ba, broko, ha, holo, di, farmer.
That plant is giving sleepless nights to the farmers.
Obana, kana, go, hoo, men, je, na, ha, se, cha, se, che, sana.
Because during this dry season, once that tree burns, it burns the whole land.
Make it, a, zeba, ki, be, ibi, ya, di, environmental affairse, hona, le, chalite, ba, fa, na, ngayon.
And I know it's the responsibility of the land affairs, they've got money that they are issuing for that.
Mpa, ha, enough.
But it's not enough.
Obani, ki, chod, jolo, kore, isi, du la, se, ba, ting, make it, hote, ki, eh, dis, eh, one of the problem, ya, disaster.
This, this often occurs and is part of the disaster program.
Mpa, ha, itri, tui, jolo, katsela, etama, ni, tri, tui, a, da.
But it's not treated accordingly.
The implementations are the conferences, resolutions are the conferences.
The implementation of the conference, eh, resolutions.
Hadila, di.
Are not followed.
Obani, di, farmer, ra, di, kono, gua, katsa, na, di, ntu, tse, na.
And the farmers, eh, talked about these issues.
Eh, public roads.
The public roads.
Rabali, di, eh, di, daba, ya, di, kuae, ena, elashalang, kato, ka, o, te.
We often experience problems with the people throwing the remnants of cigarettes along the roads.
Me, ufmane, public works, eh, sa, kata, jumbo, nogu, ina, fuka, monu, huet, za, di, fire breaks.
And the public works does not cut that, eh, eh, grass in order to make the fire breaks.
Ki bui, kaga, ba, lo, ba, mambo.
Whose responsibility is that?
Daba, ya, disaster management fund.
The issue of disaster management fund.
Ekare, ha, itu, si, ha, holo, ho, o, prevent, ndin, tson, zena.
It's like it's not really assisting in preventing these issues.
Neka, ra, kati, be, la, bele, re, re, ra, tla, takamu, ra, house, o, sinzu.
It's better to prevent first than.
National, le, provincial, le, di, di, district.
Eh, when the national and the provincial and district.
Di bili, fire prevention plan.
They must have a fire prevention plan.
Ekah, hona, uko, tu sa, rena, ki, di, area, di, fin, te, omolo, o, hona, uko, ba, ting.
So that it can take care of the areas where there's normally failed fires.
Eh, eh, kialibo, hona, li, di, varo, di, bo, maspala, mbaron, hona, li, environmental officers.
In our municipalities, there are environmental officers.
And are they, are they doing enough?
Even abaytaka holi guning.
Kapaiwe banale zoshles ba di shoka.
Or do they have all the resources that they need?
How ya wugula, eh, case ya, hutu.
When you go there and open the case of a failed fire or somebody started a failed fire.
How fitla police station, okopa na leman, adi, ah, dis, ah, 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 sign doing for dabaya inye.
Where must we report such a case to the relevant person who is, who is designated for that?
Oba na hao fitla, ota bo refero la hotueki case ye ba ta inesa ikaha mane litsi.
Because when you get to the police station, they'll tell you, ah, this is a different case.
Eh, ntswana, eh, honali, ntswana ya di, me ilaka pa di plant itse ba ta ndili fire resistant.
There's, there's a certain issue of plants that are fire resistant.
Kineki ka hotalezo, moslo munka di katzali jalwa alongs the public roads.
Uh, my suggestion would, would be, eh, they be planted along the roads.
Ki ya ta huele zuhori, hoti farmera zena zenyane nyana.
I'm calling upon to the small farmers.
Habaufuwe di, eh, equipment ya ya ntsenyane nyana, te kiana kama ra di vene.
They must be given those are small, um, equipment that is put in the, in the, what?
Zela te kama ra vene, te kahona unhu timamolu.
Uh, that can be carried by a bucket in order to extinguish the fire.
Oba ne, le di bitas, te kahona unhu timamolu, impa le ti mba fuyu thupelo.
King?
Di fire bitas.
Even the fire bitas can also be part of that.
Ki, ki batla kilewi la hollow, impa ki inalekwa broko, oba ne, sena harituka ta hubua, haritame hu implementua. Eh, ma ne, hushapua ba tuva na batlas ma ne, basa etze. Kinejoko pa feela, hauka shapua hotuwa ka bo maspa.
The municipalities must be equally punished for not doing their.
Meretla hona, horre, zebu ribili a hona osebe.
Then we will know that the bill is working.
Yalebo.
Thank you.
The bill is being enacted to, to suppress the citizens.
Uri Billy i ente, uri, i hatele se chab.
And then, public institution and the government, they're the most defaulters of this act.
Di teo za se chabali muso, ki bona ba tu di ba ba hollow ba molau.
It's a, yeah, it's a loaded statement eh?
Isleki pulelo emata hao.
This behashes realities of our lifetime.
Fela kinneti taba yo.
Hmm, then, I, that's a matter, you've raised it, we have listened to you.
Romame zeka neti.
I think on our part as parliamentarians, we need to do oversight over this public entities.
Ronarile parlamentere lukela, who, who is a oversighti, who dima di teo zena za se chab.
And demand accountability.
Me relika kahu le useba, jarisabi karabe.
And you've given us a dossier on what to look at.
Me li seleri, vila nyana nyana, horre, na seka sebe zankisi.
Yalebo, intatemutamai.
Thank you, intatemutamai.
Yes, it's over to you, Baba.
Gi zo kala ni bingelele, itelikeeshi nonge ekona ekanga eparlamente.
Let me take this opportunity to create the portfolio committee from parliament.
Besen pinda ni bingelela wonke umpaga tokona langa paga ti okanga, gu tabomfuta nyana district.
I'm creating all the community from here, from tabomfuta nyana district.
Eh, ngeskuli strunisego, i billing I supporta.
Eh, chairperson, let me alert from the first instance that I support the bill.
I kama lamingi ngupesima palala.
My name is Pesima Palala.
Ni kanga in tabazwe.
I am coming from Tabazwe.
I am the executive director of Malombo 2000 Academy.
Di ngumlaunike welo si kolitazweyo.
But by virtue of my capacity, I'm a playwright.
Genkaya skunda samke, ndi pa kwezi, kweni kweni mi ba, kweni kandolese ko.
A poet.
Di kua ngumtuke ukuwezi mi ba ke yes, poems.
And a cultural activist.
Di kwalichantlizi yolese, ntsubeko.
Eh, ogokala je, nzo kela, nina, oguti uma ngabinin bona kuti answisi, ntswela oguti ningalule.
Firstly, if I am appearing as if maybe I'm not obeying the laws, please correct me.
Ogokala je.
At least he has made an impression that who is he, so we'll have to understand him.
Eh, ogokala je, our philosophy on the matter is pretty basic. We want to help all school levers who had given up their dreams of becoming better people. Manje, i problem esnayo, gulumaspala wagiti.
Our problem that we have in our municipality.
I roll out yama vacancies, goo fire department, asazi kuti hambaganja.
We don't know the rollout of vacancies in the fire department.
Ogusbili.
Secondly.
Asguazu oguti, uma ngabektiwa gnomlilo, si zo reporter gu.
We don't know, eh, who to report to if there are failed fires.
Goba ogokala je, i fire department ye tu aiseko yasu so asazi kuti igupi gu manje.
As a district function, you are aware of that ne?
Harris Smith.
It's a district function.
Okay.
The district. You have fire services. You are the fire authority by virtue of Harris Smith. So, so the question that is raised, he doesn't know what's happening there in terms of the vacancies and who's doing what. So what you are saying, Tete, mapala ne?
Yebo ma.
Okay, it's fine.
Eh, ogusbili oguti, guyona i police station i valiwe.
Secondly, even our police station is closed down.
And ingesonto elpelile beskulu manaso, i station commander was tembisu kutu zo ivula li poli, zo ivula i police, i police station. Oguzaguazu ogu reporter ama case wo mlilo na kokonke.
Last week, we had a meeting with our station commander to say that they must reopen the police station so that you can report the cases of, eh, failed fires.
But till today, i police station is a valid in Tabazwe.
But till now, in Tabazwe, the police station is closed down.
Manje, ge, nfuna oguti i parliament eh, yasoguti Tina Abantu Basen Tabazwe, we are not here to criticize.
I want the portfolio committee to know that we are here not to criticize as the community of Tabazwe.
No ma ogu destroy.
Or to destroy.
But we are here to defend the revolution.
Si lapake uzo kuselumza balazo.
And to unlock economic potentials.
Si kuselele nemeko yozoko sho.
And also to change the drastic situation.
Si chinge na le meko imbi si pilapan squae.
Ogoktinage, nzo kela, i parliament eh, isize, oguti, si guazu ogu launcha i environ, eh, environmental forum la pa in Tabazwe.
I would like the parliament to help us so that we can be able to launch, eh, the environmental forum in Tabazwe.
Goba, seskapeli le masenza i research yetu kuti imililo emningi, aisa kamu kipela ngoku shako masati.
We have realized that many fires that are coming, they don't end up only destroying the forests.
Puti ngikala ngakulu ngalo o, o wakanda ama pampas.
We are also, eh, having a problem with the person who was, eh, who was the cause of the pampas.
Goba ama illegal dumping sites lawa, i wona lawa aktu le.
Did we get that right?
Yes, ingati mbawa with pampas.
Is it a person or is, is a problem of pampases?
Ah, it's a problem with pampases.
Oh, it's a problem with pampases.
So ge, ama legal, eh, eh, illegal dumping sites lawa, i wona lawa aktu le la ma pampas. En ektrine ne kubina sekusha imi kukula pa in Tabazwe.
Also, the legal dumping sites are full of pampases, that's why you see the informal settlements are burning because of those, of pampases.
So ngakoke shokela u si zo nyekonala po.
In that regard, eh, we would like to get assistance.
Nyabo.
I thank you.
Honorable person, they didn't understand pampases. Until I have to explain what pampases are. I don't know, but it's okay. Eh, siya vonga, eh, Tete mapala.
Yalebo, intatemutamai.
Yeah, constructive issues.
Din kate ahankan neti.
Eh, oh, Malutia Pofung escaped the fire department. It's not the com, oh, there are some districts that have the competency in some locals. In your case, you are the fire services authority as well.
Ochohulonali fire authorities as well.
And then there are questions that are being raised here.
Honali diputo tijin sebuti twengape mona.
And then MMC, can I give you an opportunity of record?
Ki kopa MMC, olobu alinta.
To talk to that, eh, that eh, piece.
Olobu alinta de pesi.
So that, and then you'll be able to give us feedback on his concern.
Me, o refa feedback eh, di ngongo reho zena za hai.
But the rest, I should think, the issue of the environmental forum, the colleagues from the department, including yourself again MMC, because that is a shared responsibility, eh, local, provincial, national, it's doable, that can be done.
Din kate dinsewa abu lenkatso na di kahona upeta.
And the update on the police station is still your competency.
Li hubu la apu station.
You definitely know what's happening.
Oba nala uti ba orna, huetza hala immo.
Can we make sure that you have that meeting with him before?
Ki kopa, u, ukopa ne linta de, oh, hona uka orna butata kibufi.
Okay.
Solapili.
Can I allow the speaker on the floor to proceed?
Ne, oka zola pili. Ki sa kila vilma muniyata o kuthola lena.
Thank you for the opportunity that has been given to me.
Ke kara, hada udumedisa, be tapile bakaba parlament.
Greetings to my parliament, eh, leaders.
Di bemedisa, marena, I think amona.
Greetings to.
Samalutia Pofung.
Greetings to traditional leaders who are here in the community of Malutia Pofung.
Nakali vizo, Intavisense Sewi.
I am, my name is Intavisense Sewi.
Yes, Sizoto, Tlokolani.
I'm from Sizoto in Tlokolani.
So, ki supporta bill.
I support the bill.
Haki supporta Billy, ki supporta kalo re, ki shore, me la oya te new, ekenzene mitcha. Itu da recivele, za itu da ripusa hollow.
I support the bill, hoping that whatever the, the amendments that will be included there will assist us, will be useful to us.
Really, ba ahiba Tlokolani.
As Tlokolani, eh, community.
Rela, bembadi porfo.
As well, we are, we are animal owners.
Kimme, kimme ana di di porfo la sa sedevi.
I, I, I am unemployed, but I have animals.
Di derekata hollow so.
I love, I love livestock.
Ana hicha kujobsho.
So when there are failed fires, it really saddens me.
So, ntki kopa ngore, haki, hakinha, hakinha, horre na ingai za joan, haki bona na hicha.
There's nothing that I can do when I see failed fires.
Haki zibona, ki twanzi ki kalekai.
I don't know where to start at.
Impa, kineki kalakata hara garafuma na, dreinyanya horre na, re kalekai, hana hicha, re za joan.
I would like for us to receive, to receive training about, on how to deal with failed fires.
Rela bembadi porfo la hollow, ba na kasinze, i kapanze, sa kusukapanze la ki dreinyi.
As animal farmers, because we already have, have animals, we only need training.
Le di resources, si harinazo.
We also don't have resources.
Neki zibaka lora, amolo, how, how do kai, ki tamaki ti meka neti.
All I know about fire is that when there's fire, I only need water to, to extinguish it.
So, kinala wetata garotlokalene.
There's a problem.
Kisna ona medya, oso ki joan ga kai, haki sa zibi di resources itza, zedinga.
So there's a problem in Tlokolani, sometimes we spend the whole month without water, so how will I extinguish fire if it, it there's ever an outbreak?
So, ki kopa Billy, be successfuli.
I therefore wish for the bill to be successful.
Horre, di complainti za orana di hono, ho, ana ne.
So that our complaints can be addressed.
Ki zama lanale, mona kantatemutamai.
I agree with, eh, intatemutamai.
Horre, kapilaba, public road.
We, we are close to, to a public road.
Ena wahcha, ha hollow Tlokolani.
And Tlokolani is prone to failed fires.
Ena kanadi di kampote nyani.
And we have small camps.
For di porfo la za.
Where, where we keep our animals.
So, renare kalakata, horre, kareka, fuadi porfo, rekafa di kampote di kimaspa la Sizoto.
We wish our, eh, the Sizoto municipality can afford us, eh, bigger camps where we can keep our animals.
Horre, di porfo la za orana, ho, di hono fuma na orana, di kapila joan.
So that our animals can be kept well in those. I thank you.
Okay, Intaviseng, yalebo.
Thank you, Intaviseng.
You need training.
Oba ta thupelo.
How to deal with fire.
Ya husebeza na le milo ina ya shaha.
And the water must be made available.
Limi, si abetein.
Eh, yalebo.
Yalebo, thank you.
Kilewa sebaka senasu ki subanen.
Thank you for the opportunity that is given to me.
Kilewa mukopi o, uditimo o san parlamenten.
Thank you for the, the, the leaders from parliament.
Kilewa sichaba serinti onguani, fe de sichaba saka, tabomufuzanyan.
I thank the tabomufuzanyan community that is here.
Miki roho era mme mtsamaisi msebezi.
I'm saying to you, chairperson.
Unzole kaya na kuina kaofe, ntsu shimi.
Where have you been all this time?
Me, kisho yola katasalo bakalaho, obulala ho.
The, the reason I'm saying that is because.
Limonze twenty-seven, zefiti di.
In the past twenty-seven years.
Iba o bilite.
If you have been there.
Ika be, ha honu hulu, ha honu hulu diwa, sabato va tu, reli hule ha honu, katri ibo.
Black farmers, black farmers would be very far concerning, eh, farming knowledge.
Impa kuena monuti de kajenu.
But, ke, you are here now.
Kialebo.
Thank you so much.
Kiala rata.
I love you.
Sichaba sana ke sa rata kaofe.
And I love the community.
Me he, ha ki ita, tabi me, ksa, ksa batla huzapu.
Le ruza ka, kala rata, ba ta le ruza ro kilo namanga, you know?
Yot, mutuena kuwa mona, mba ka, ntsamaisi o msebezi, ki chief, ki, ki morena, mahabimuloi.
My name is Chief Mahabimuloi.
Eh, 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 ba, wozi suk, baholu ko treval.
From Baholu ko treval.
Wozi suk.
In Wethisuku.
Kwakwa, ona biten kwakwa.
Kwakwa.
Eh, me. Kineki sa, ksa ukopa huzapu zo ona ikaba.
May I ask a question?
Eh, muso wana wasila hai, kama lute apofung, li muso wana was tereki, kama mufuzanyana, who represented ina?
Eh, I just want to find out if our local government and the district municipality, are they represented yet?
Ki na le, ki na lewa nashiva, speaker rasu o, o maluta apofung.
There's a speaker.
Li MMC.
Maluta apofung.
Renali apology a mayor, eh, that's why, uh, the, the, the MMC.
The mayor ha, ha, has apologized for not being here.
Oh.
But really MMC were public safety.
MMC for public safety is here.
Ngari kialebo, kaobati ona bo.
Thank you for their presence.
Impa, ki batla hatu.
Anything moreena, that relates to the district, you can raise it with us, we'll convey the message to the district mayor.
Impa, honali tabai, eh, a man district, oka bua kaya naritla isamalaita.
Katia wo yu hulu ki tlayta yonu.
Thank you, mayor, do so.
Impa ksa batla, tsara bili, ki tsara ga mona kama lute apofung.
Firstly, let me start by saying.
Eh, ka, pati itzuriga, mala di apofung ona yonu.
Eh, about the part that I'm, I'm responsible for in Maluta Apofung.
Kuti gamisha, li fiere le, lecha, li fiel hand.
It's always said, the new broom sweep cleaner.
Me he, reti, li tieng kajenu.
So you are here, now that you are here today.
Le sebezi.
You have promised us.
Djalaha ku, riri.
Now we are not requesting.
Arabatla ona la nyanya na, zele nsa esala na kuinfiti le.
We don't want to see anything of what happened previously.
Di nyene fali te muso wana lo, ona kaka kari tu, ona ba tuva.
That has undermined our government and we as black people.
Muso wana, orin siten huleho.
Our government that we love so much, that has taken us out of oppression.
Rabatla o supporta, hutoa fas, machakuru kaofela, bo me ba na.
We want to support it in all aspects.
Katse la ena, ipalamenti li hunarre, lewa ki, ki, ki klabsho koi ena, me rikopa, li, li, di, di, departmenti te li, di kedi eza ntsu shana li eh.
We, we wish other departments can do what you have done now.
Rtohona, South Africa ya ona, ebene ha ya ona, kaofela hono share economy nyana, muho ngana ntsushu.
So that South Africa can belong to all of us, so that we can share in the economy of the country.
Ksa batla, kisa hape ga mona, kama lute apofung.
Let me go back to Maluta Apofung.
Ki wii le taba eh nu.
I said so.
Honali, di ngono, sekidi ngolozi, eh, sekidi ngosi.
I've written some texts.
Ki tuhomela si, o malute apofu.
And sent, I've written some letters to Maluta Apofung.
Iba ta iha te zemrao. Iba ta iha te zemrao, asu petis.
But, there, there's nothing that has happened so far.
Impa kbatla, ukopa fe la, onu shoko mona ntsu kantzi, li petis msebezi.
Ple, ple, please promise and, 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 and implement as you have promised.
Oska wa wachaba, mutuha fitama, no, umushaba fe la, umushaba kama suti fe la, ju, bu, osa monkey, ki mu tu, wahai nu, umo na kalabakala, mutyo.
Don't judge the book by its cover, because these people are the ones who put you there.
Mutyo li, na umo huenamo, kapakala ho ba nuliti.
That person needs your assistance there.
Katse pisu eh le nyaye tza, ki mu xatro, oli nding obusangapa yonu.
Because of the promise that was made by the ruling party.
Samaisi msebezi, ksa ukopa, ki ktsaha nyane fe la ki huenan.
Let me say.
Aofi nyana je, kileka tsaha, kileka tsaha meeting.
Recently, I had a meeting.
Li superior ya STU, tabomufuzanyan.
With, eh, tabomufuzanyani STU superior.
Stock theft unit.
Or stock theft unit.
Me, ha, mo, ne rubuaka, yonataba ya di porfo la zila shaha, ntsu shua.
We, we discussed about the animals that get lost.
Rubuala kataba ya milo, ona osho weza.
And, and felled fires, that, that is a problem.
Ki problem eh holo, me, ki tla shalu, ki tla shaisa hoo nyana fe la hoo.
It's, it's, it's a serious problem.
Jo, mo, mo lonahu, hau chame, uchisa joan bo na ka hudi, uglobi chisa lakatla asi, uglobi chisa, ebaba sakhona, butumele bo mila hat.
Once this fire i, is burning, it, it burns the, 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 the grass even up to the roots, so that that fire can, the, the grass can no longer grow.
Di gla, uglali di porfo.
And then the animals die.
Di, di jaro za ona, crop erona, ya icha.
Our crops get burned down.
Ibe lo gula la ba.
People also die because of these fires.
Me he, kama ka obani, ntsu zo kaofela di tsiye ntsu, kaofela di zahale.
After all the damage.
Ibe muso yale, uluka la zata ditlera, new disaster.
Then the place will have to be declared a disaster area.
Chela te, ekere zin kwa kamo nu, yeu edla tu se chela teu, ki chela te, enga da, hapi hapi hapi.
The money that is being put in there is a lot of money.
Esato ke hi ngongo kabinie, tsa chela teu.
Which is not supposed to be spent there.
Impa chela te, ntsu shu be, yesa omu omu msebezi, obeti ru, uchna bo lescha.
That money should have been used for something else.
Ka hona he, kilewa hal, haliteng, katza mollo, me, kileka sia presentation eh.
Thank you for being here.
Kileka sia presentation eh monu.
I left, I left the presentation in that meeting.
Eki laka zangore, lilo na libeli, ona tu zbo sibisa na moho.
I als, I also want you to have that presentation, so that we can work together.
Ka haga yona?
In, in the presentation.
Ki swaile, diwa, bo haplasibalini ti onguano, Maluta Apofung.
I, I pointed a few farmers that are there, in, in, are here in the Maluta Apofung.
And I also just want to mention that.
Ki bata, ki bata obulela ha pe hori.
Black owned farms.
Ma, maplasia o, iling abatubaba tu.
In Maluta Apofung.
Mona Maluta Apofung.
I di, I divided into five units.
Ah, ah, rotika di uniti te shano.
Consisting of plus minus sixty farms and farmers.
Mo honali maplasia akabang fifty to sixty.
And these farms are engulfed by white farmer's land.
Me maplasiana akaha ramo bua abatubaba sue.
Eh, ki, mo mo ngosi ndenge shaisi se, kai shoyaka.
In my letter, I have, I have explained that.
Kaditoko, equipment ya utima molo.
About the equipment of extinguishing fire.
Li plan ekay tza, ona ki fe.
And the place.
Li plan ekay tza ki fe, hola, hola molo o.
And, and the plan that can be made to control the fire.
Ki ngosi monu me, ki talakasa, utelu ifumane, luena obeli ona, re tsa ba, kusebeza na kaya ona, ki aku opa.
It is there in the presentation that I also want you to have it.
Kikopa, ungole monu, ungole monu, ki ta atla, ki tla pitse ntsu shu na kaofe.
I, I want you to commit yourself that you will come and you will make it a point that everything is implemented.
Hamo hona ba tabi le balintimu, baile mbaye ma mona.
And the leader, all the leaders who are here who have already said something.
Ki taofa, nto, ki taofa, nto, iki ne kama na kana fiku tashula, tashula, ntsu zanga tashula ba tva ba at, basu lehi le na kuinfiti le.
Me, I will give you something that you should put in your amped, then you will win, you'll conquer everything.
Sa ba tuva, o ba tsahala hufi duena, and embrace them.
People will listen to you.
Ni, oba sa ba temese, me ki a uye sa, ukrufi ke na mustolo monkey oblel.
You will achieve so much, me.
Eh, me, me, ha fi kataba, ki akuana, jola siketa yonu.
I, I'm closing now.
Taba yena ya molo, ha honu hulu moni, eh, di national road.
The issue of fires in, along the national road.
Bu hulu ba mo ya, ba, 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 ba molo, o, o siye zambuka la mo.
Most of the fires starts there along the national road.
Kikopa, hosali je na, uso uye se, nto ya, uesuko plan kapa moralo, moralo wa, uye za ho, uchisa hola hola molo o nu, kana ko yeu ya sizin, sizin ye, sizin ye na ufe.
I want us to, for, for us to make a plan that during this winter season, when the fires, during the, the fire season.
Huli hukana le, uye tzi fire breaks, kabonako.
There should be, fire breaks should be established on time.
And I humbly request you that, that it should be scheduled.
Kikopa hori se nu, si, si, si be we moralong.
And applied.
Me si sebe te.
In the whole South, South Africa.
Mona Africa bua kaofe.
Edla ba fukutsa msebezi, omu hulili mule ya rabo Cape Town, uchisa mi huli ntsu shu na kaofela zo.
That will, will get rid of even the fires that are ravaging Cape Town.
Me wa ka, ki fe la hakano, ba tamaisi, ba tuva hisu ba, ba, ba lintimu na kaofela, kilewa.
I will end there, thank you so much to everyone.
Ralebo amre.
Thank you, morena.
Eh, speaker, the TKL Act, eh, morena, molo you spoke earlier, spoke about. There's a clause that talks about, eh, the mayor traditional leadership forum to, to execute the IGR thing, the way I listen to him seemingly, that has not yet happened, because in terms of the new act, the mayor is expected in yourself as a speaker, because you are responsible for community participation, to have these quarterly meetings, specially designed for traditional leaders, I've learned that in my other life, before I joined this portfolio committee. It works, but the way he's saying it, because he kept on raising letters that is written to the municipality. It's the issue of the institutional memory, we all know that you are new, but most of the administrators, the junior ones, they've been there. You need to hold them accountable, so that you, you respond to the issues as raised, but generally, the chief was just thanking us for coming. It's positive feedback and tatumdisi, and then we're learning something out of that, see? We need to keep on interacting with our people as public representatives, then the rest, I think, will take them forward. Can I allow the, are there still more people who are still going to come and sit? So you can join, because anyone who still want to come and talk, there are empty chairs.
Ibe hosana le ba tuva, nze mbava tla hotla ba tuva.
You can join so that.
Zesaduluang.
We can see how we manage our time, we're moving towards closure now.
Obane re se re li, ma tu lenga opetela.
There are empty chairs, can you all come, if you are coming, so that it will be the last batch?
La zan di fe uze uze temo hai, ba lili temba tuva ba tla o bua.
But if we are represented, there's no need to stand up.
Impa hai ba nta ya how, isay builue, ha shoka haloe.
And repeat yourself, yeah, that's the issue, then can I hand over to you sisters?
Ne, marapo hue.
Thank you, me.
Thank you, me.
Kali kilo bo eh, parlamenten.
I would like to thank parliament.
Maspa la wa ona.
Our municipality.
Le ba tu le morena ona kaofe.
Our communities and the traditional leadership.
Biso laka ki nyaling Iris Muklungu.
My name is Nyaling Iris Muklungu.
Kita working on fire.
I'm from Working on Fire.
Ki yidu ti mona ki mamete, ba abu, ba bulempelo, ba shoka le sedi, lele nga ta holo ka working on fire.
As I was sitting down, I was listening to the speakers who need more training.
Eh, hona joli kitote te dinte zadi puto hori, obane working on fire, ba tamu ba patale, ebankaba tu sa utima molo.
Eh, also what I've learned is, eh, eh, or I want to know why Working on Fire must, must pay, how, how is that you want?
Ha re ba tu sa utima molo.
Who must pay? Or why they must pay when we are assisting them to extinguish the fire?
Eh, working on fire is a program. Eloring, itu isabatu, kadin tsa zengat.
That is helping people with many things.
Eh, honali, le fa pa, le itehang, ka haga yona working on fire.
There's another unit within Working Fire, for Fire. Pardon?
FPA.
FPA.
Protection Association.
Protection Association.
Ben ba tuva ba ona mona la hai, ha ba ti bo tame ba, paika mahani kapo ba, join eh le fa pa le.
Our communities or our people don't know that they must be part of that unit.
Eh, how join eh, how join eh, how join eh, FPA?
If you join FPA.
Opata la service once a year.
You're paying the service fee once a year.
And eh, harita one eh, service iselimahala.
When we come to you, the service is free.
We no sopata la transport of eh.
You only pay for the transport.
Eh, ki kalaha ki ukopa hoda ho, li, eh, municipality wa, ronele Maluta Apofung.
I would like to come to our municipality in Maluta Apofung.
Renali agreement, ya contracti le bo na.
We have an, a contractual agreement with them.
Jalo ka working on fire.
As Working on Fire.
Obane ho, ho bona, hona jola ri di sebe di so, ri di tools.
Because to them, right now, we are tools.
Eh, hori di sebe di so, te udi se, di sebe te.
In order for those tools to work.
Bata bene, o beneli, certain amount eh tza.
There must be a certain amount of money to be paid.
Hadu koli di sebe di tu, di sebe di.
If the cars or have been used.
Honali chela te tamimba pata.
There's an amount that should be paid.
Oh, eh, ona ha pe, eh, ki, ba tla huri, re, 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 working on fire, re, di well skilled laborers.
As work, as workers in wer, working for fire, we are well skilled workers.
Re etadi, fire awareness.
We do fire awareness campaigns.
Di kolo le maplasin.
At schools and in the farming communities.
Eh, jalo kasa no ksa, sa, re di sebe di so.
As I said, we are tools.
Ri atima ona, di labora, leka di kolo iha pe molo.
We extinguish the fire and we also take the cars there.
Re etadi, di fire protection, ilin di fire breaks.
We also do fire protection, eh, devices, eh, meaning fire breakers.
And hadi kali, kana ko ya ho, cha fe kapo mariye.
We don't only start to do those things during the winter season, but we do that before.
Eh, re etadi, fuel reduction, we all think, fuel reduction. Body hands lishing, re pokosa joan.
Iris.
Me.
You see, the issues that you are trying to raise this forum, these are the things you should be raising with the community there, on the ground.
Eh.
Wa vana re are licking.
Yes, me.
Then eh, you didn't have to wait for the public participation, for you to come and showcase your area of work, because these are the things that you are supposed to be convening these people, going to the municipality, going to the Horongkong Shate, then.
Eh, modula astula o leka, shaki sa hori, le sedile na le me, Irisia fanankalo na kapili kama na, ine tshansi be, ki ntu eh, ntsu ngpili, hunonyoma ikuto eh na, ebeyo ya hobo le bangaka karo lo, morena ba etapi, le sichabe, inglo re sichaba kaka re, zosu tzeba ona, se kaita in.
Oh, thanks you to comment on the bill.
Alright, thank you, me.
And then, the issue is that what you're doing is what you are supposed to be doing in these communities, that you are not doing, maybe out of this exercise, now you've seen the need for you to reach out this community that you service.
Eh, katsolapie.
Ta ba ta ba me, ene ki sa mo, ku hori.
The reason why I talk about this issue is.
Maspa la wa ona oyaa, uasukula kachele.
Our municipality doesn't have enough money.
Laba timama, kolitza wana asu enough resources a reka tima nukum.
Where even if they extinguish the fire on a house, eh, the two, the, the resources are not enough.
Koloya ten inya, niha isha remekzi, a enough a reka tima nukum.
The car or that they use is small, it, it, it doesn't have the big tank to extinguish all the fire that is got in the, the house.
Seni ki bata slisa ku hori, mongao na atu re Maspa le.
What I want to, to say is that our manager.
Ey kama ha ni, le sa, sa, sa shaha, akho no opatala dibili, ki ho no utusa, mo taten arina lu o na, karama nispal.
He must be work with Working for Fire, so that we can be able to resolve the challenges that we are having in Maluta.
Thank you, yalebo.
Thank you very much. Ralebo am Iris.
The next speaker, I can see you are dressed up in the regalia.
Si bui se la telanki abona di aparo taha o.
You seem to be an officer.
Ki te tama elanale, bo officiri.
But officials are also allowed to participate?
Eh, me ba officiri le bo na ba, amohetu, ba kanka karo lo.
Can I plead with you to be the last one eh, so that we allow the others to speak first? There are issues that cut across, that affect your district as well, then as and when you speak, you will also be giving solution to some of the things that have been raised, yeah, or then allow the municipality to also respond, including the department, it's represented on certain issues to respond.
Ki tre kupa, ota be karo le, au kete la, yes, ya di bu, kikupa ota be karo le, ya di bui za, au kete la, obane, emu ma, ba tla fana kadi karabo, odin khatse pa msi twen kama na.
Okay, but that doesn't deter your right to participate, ne, I see you are leaving, you're not leaving, ne? You're not angry with my decision, you still have the right to participate, because, yeah, you, that's your opportunity.
Onse, onali tu kilo ya honkaka karo lo, haune wemo nyetla. Katsolapie.
Eh, kialeboa, omui fo oh kavani.
Thank you to the honorable delegation.
Eh, kilefumpili ha ho.
I respect you a lot.
Eh, keshamani ni, Sizoto, hola Sosoloa.
I'm coming from Sizoto in Sosoloani.
Kenze ibile, ki za melanali biliena, ki te etabiliye na.
I support this bill as well.
Kalibi, kalibi zo, ki mohozi mohozi.
My name is Mohozi Mohozi.
Ki word committee, ka hara Sizoto.
I'm a member of the word committee in Sizoto.
Eh, ki toba mukutshana holo, ha ki na ba mutede.
I won't be long in my speech.
Eh, ki uka di bui, di bui de mona na, ka, ho halongwe lo haba na uchisa sa.
I heard the previous speakers talking about the issue of reprimanding the kids or coaching the kids about felled fires.
Eh, nteki shoko melan go re misiaro na, insayola, eh, atu melapela di public road.
Also, what I'm noticing is that our human settlements are expanding towards the public roads.
Mo pladi public road, jalo kamela wa ba roala, ba desadi paola.
As the previous speaker alluded to the fact that they collect the firewood and they are burning the braziers.
Honali na kwa hori, baski baro balale molo katu, ba ba lo ka.
Sometimes they don't sleep with those containers in the houses, but they put those containers outside their shelters.
Eh, molo, hosati mahanso wense, ntsu na le mashaa.
As they throw out those, eh, water ashes, they, sorry, those containers, they still have burning, eh, coals or. In the middle of the night, sometimes there will be strong winds. And then start felled fire in that way. Sometimes when we wake up at night, there's already felled fire all over. Because it's an alder who threw out those coals, those burning coals. Or they jump the road and go through those burning coals in the forest. So we are here to request that. Our leadership speak to the people residing along the national roads. So that before they throw out those burning coals, they must make sure that they fully extinguish them with water. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ntatemots.
For the word of wisdom. I hope as a ward committee member, this is the gospel you preach amongst your fellow ward committee members and citizens. Okay, Ralebo. Over to you.
My name is Temba Shabalala from Intabazu.
I'm from Tembaletu Welfare Care Youth Development Centre. I'm from Tembaletu Welfare Care Youth Development Centre. I'm from Tembaletu Youth Development Centre.
I'm from Tembaletu Youth Development Centre.
Yes, I support the bill.
In Harris Smith, we do have lots of crises.
As I'm the chairperson of the organization.
I'm here to make a request.
We need more project.
We need more projects within Malutia Apufu.
As such, Department of Agriculture and Forests and Fishes. I restore more project. I repeat that we need more project within those sectors. I'm working with youth. Youth is unemployment.
Youth is unemployed.
But we do have ideas. Then after we do all that plans or ideas, but we don't get any official ones who can help us to make that project to be successful. Yes, Intabazu. If fire fighter, they don't have much equipment. As always, they arrive late.
Every time when they arrive, it's too late.
So last year, October, we have had that incident of house burn. They arrive late. It already was ash. Yes, as a civil organization within Malutia Apufu. We were thinking that maybe our municipality will cooperate with us, but unfortunately, our municipality Last week, I was at the mayor's office to request some appointment, but even today, I didn't even get any response. Yes, in terms of firefighters, firefight. We don't have enough equipment. So my ideas, my idea as such, I was thinking that our municipality, we need to provide. But then I was thinking that our municipality need to build their structures, maybe per ward. Maybe that thing will help us to create more jobs within our municipality. And also of installing the fire extinguish, we still need that, that project. And also more training for that, but special on our youth. Harris Smith Libraries.
The libraries are Harris Smith.
They don't have equipment or resources. And I would like to have more our municipality to assist us on that one. Yes, at least if all libraries will install hotspots. Because sometimes we wait, we wait on the long queue to use the access of the internet in library. So but we do have our laptops and computers where we can use it, but if we can have access with internet.
Before I vacate the podium.
I'd like to advise our official municipality leaders. We do have illegal dumping all over in Malutia Apufu. We had a project that we want to start, but unfortunately, even today, we didn't even start just because our municipality delayed that. And that project will accommodate all wards from Ward 1 until Ward 35 in Malutia Apufu. So the project name is Legal Dumping Cleaning Enforcement Project. So the same project, we're going to employ per ward, which means we're going to hire eight youth per ward.
Thank you.
Okay. The youth unemployment. I think the team from the municipality, they are going to respond in terms of their LED projects. Over to you, Sel.
Greetings to everyone. Members of parliament and civic organizations that are here. I thank, thankful for the opportunity that is given to me. I support the bill. My name is Tidiso Shabalala. From Sizoto Municipality in Matuabing. And I fall under Tusanang Commonage. I've noticed that we don't have firefighters in Matuabing. There's only one person who uses one van. And it's a very small tank.
The private firefighter.
Then there's private firefighters. When our grazing land burns down, they are nowhere to be found. But in the farms, they go and assist. I therefore request members of parliament to ensure that they hire more firefighters. So that there's not only one person who is responsible for that work. Because once the fire starts, all the sheks get burned down. Grazing land is burned down. And then we struggle to feed our animals. We register in the Department of Agriculture for animal feed. But we are never assisted. Our cattle die as a result. I would be appreciative if if you can assist us where we need your assistance. Or where we ask for your assistance.
And I quote, "We don't need any more promises." "We need action."
May come down to the people. To the province. From the province to the municipality. Especially in Senegal, Matuabing. In Sizoto Municipality. And make sure that and make sure that they hire youth who can be trained to extinguish fire. Thank you.
Okay, we need to come down. Let then allow the next speaker.
Thank you for the opportunity that you've given me. Thank you to parliament for coming to the people. I stay in the farms. My name is Jabana Ramosedez. I've noticed that at the farms, it's where the fire outbreaks start. As the youth of Slaber, we went to Dijabem Municipality to assist the youth with firefighting training. Because when we become reactive on the fire that has affected us. The Slaber community is against livestock. And our grazing land is closer to the road. Therefore, we have a shortage of grazing land. We ask support in that regard as well. Also, awareness campaigns for drivers that they should stop throwing out the cigarettes that causes fire. Okay, coming to the fire that starts inside the local area. Our area is a farm which has really become so big now. Okay, people are establishing sheks now. So we don't have electricity. Most people use candles and gas bottles. So we ask, we request from the safety so that they can come and talk to the youth. To make awareness campaigns to the community about about fire and then so that they can also give us some equipment. We also need training just for a few people so that when we're still waiting for the firefighters to come, those will be able to at least extinguish the little that they can. We also request that primary school children be taught about fire, felled fires. Thank you and I support the bill. Thank you.
Second last speaker.
Afternoon, everyone.
My name is Ntatemokwena. I'm here because two weeks ago... I'm here because two weeks ago.
Kalalha ezuki ba tubaba bidischa, binsagona monakata ba la ya mullo.
Two people died because of the fire in our community.
Eh, mabulela mona.
Mabulela here in Kuak.
And of which one is a primary school child?
The, and one of them is a primary school child.
Together with their father.
Ntate wa hai.
Fortunately, I think eh, two people were rescued there.
Kalisohono, lo ba tubaba bediba ile ba pulo swamolongo.
So, what I identified is eh, apparently, the reason why they could not get assistance.
Le, le ba kal, kibona huke le ba kale, nte nguro baske ba hona utuswa.
Is because there was no water.
Ki hubani hunosname.
Now, even the jojos are not available lately.
Lidi jojo.
Bili nana, ya feltwa.
We support this bill.
Eh, input ya runa ye wozwen.
Our written submission.
Ikenye ledise kara input ye nswenke Free State Salga.
Is inclusive in the input that has been made by Free State Salga.
Obana ba ile baro consulta habaiyeza.
Because they consulted us before doing so.
Me, edinhtatzeka mo kaofalazona ki, ki dinhtatzarona.
So everything that is in that belongs to us.
Ntsayaba tangeru ngongo reisa fena.
Our concern is.
Ki okinyele twa wa marena, jolo ka di law enforcers.
Is, is the inclusion of, of traditional leaders as law enforcers?
Eh, le ba gala runa kela hori marena, ki karolo ya puso.
Eh, the reason being that traditional leaders are a part of government.
Karolo zo tesa puso.
Or, or parts of government.
Di sebedisa the arms of law enforcers in the government.
Di sebedisa law of enforcers muso.
Juali ki ona fele ntsayerner lakaza hori, ona egatro swaya mare.
That's, that's the one thing that we wish it could be taken out, the, the issue of traditional leaders.
Le ba gala runa ko ba si reliza.
Eh, the reason being that we want them to be protected.
Hape re, renale ngongo re, hoya hori di peace officer kaofalase enforza ndelo.
We are also concerned that peace officers who enforce the law.
Rea tseba runa di appointwa in terms of the Criminal Procedures Act.
We know that they are being appointed in terms of Criminal Procedures Act.
Eh, renale ngongo re, hoya ona ibeba marena ona, atla appointwa ki ma ngorebe di peace officer.
We are then concerned that who will appoint traditional leaders to be peace.
Officers.
Peace officers.
Ke ka ona re re ngarbasreletze ngarbanse.
That is why we say let's protect them and take them out of, of that.
Karolo ye.
Of, out of that section.
Ba tase bedisa di law enforcers etama spala.
They will make use of, of law and municipality and government law enforcers.
Eh, ki utkule edinhtatzo tsete tla isisyo ngwano ke ba ai.
I've listened to everything that the, the, the community has raised.
Eh, haratsona, ba, balakaza ma iso ya melo.
Among them, they, they, they complain about.
Le melo ya etama isan.
The management of fire and the rules.
Makala akaba tusan.
That govern the, the, the entities that can assist them.
Relimmaspala rea dumela.
As the municipality, we do agree.
Renale di ppeto ta, ota maisa, di sebediso tene tama loka kara stereki.
We have challenges of managing this eh, fire services in the district.
Impa rinse relika.
But we do our best.
Udi atameela.
To attend to them.
Ta ba yorika yeta isan kiya hori.
What I can just say is that.
Matatian ana ola asaitisyo enke secha ba ke ba ai.
In all the, the challenges that the community has raised.
Hunali mula u, unse ngoyezua ora alwa.
There's an act that is being drafted.
Ya, etola olamelo.
Which will man, which will govern the fires.
Ke nanar matata ose ana asaidi ngwano.
I think all the cha, challenges that have been raised.
Atla addressa ha, mula uso letse bedzo.
Will be addressed once that act has been promulgated.
Rea tseba runa, ososo tama ilima kala ose adizivi.
We do know that the, 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 the act has already passed through several stages.
Eh, bili ewu isese fele hori ukele Parliamenting.
The bill just needs to, to be taken back to Parliament.
Hay kreta ite honotli swaguanos chabi.
Then come back to the, to the public.
Etla addressa matata nakao fele au, utle ngalasaisa guan.
It will address all the challenges that people have raised.
Ntsayao kletela ene ngibatla fele ki addresse yeta isisyo enke secha ba.
Lastly, I want to address this issue.
Ho bo na hezo runa, ma fapa ika ra belandinhtenza mollo.
It is clear that eh, departments that are responsible for fire issues.
Atama yela hulele le ba ai.
Distance themselves from, from the community.
Me ba ai abana tsebo.
And the communities don't have any knowledge of them.
Kahara Maspalanza, trela meralo ya IDP.
Because the municipality is in the process of finalizing the IDP.
Ta ba ya ditudu, diditome lo, tava ai.
Eh, eh, training and education of, of community members.
Etla kinyele swa meralo nya, ma fapa ose tama iso ya melo.
Will be included in that plan.
Me re taitisa ornas secha ba seya tseba ro heza alanga melo.
And we will make it a point that the communities know what, what eh entails this act.
Bi kara beloba bo na ki bofin.
What their responsibilities are.
Seo ba tla miangosie tala, seowasa tla miangosie.
What they should and what they should not do.
Eh, hake trela.
As I conclude.
Re re, chabasiske sa, sa ngama, juehasa saboni dituswa.
We say please the communities don't fight when you don't see any action happening.
Lidi daere.
And don't burn tires.
Baya strating.
And go to the street.
Di tomatisesozene tza melo.
The, this amendment.
Di rehas chabasinali ditetleba kana tlatzame lo.
Says if people have eh, challenges about the fires.
Ba ngongo le ba tle.
They should write to the municipality.
Bialebo.
Thank you. Thank you, officer.
Thank you for giving us the much needed responses.
Raalebo wa, kadi kara belo taha.
I saw some colleagues from the department.
Kiboney ba tuwa, basedizi ba bamuzo alefatem.
Can you quickly come and talk to the issues that affect the department?
Ki kupali tle litobuwa kadi nklase amananlili fapa.
Service delivery issues eh.
Dintha zapanoya di sebedi.
Eh, good evening, honor. Good.
Still afternoon.
Okay, good day honorable members.
Dumelan, di totse chabani.
Eh, and also our traditional leaders.
Le ba etapeli ba runa baseto.
And the community as large.
Lesse chaba kaofela.
Eh, my name is Kakisho Munnehela.
Le bizolaka ki Kakisho Munnehela.
I'm commonly known as KG from the department.
Anga ta ketsuwa kili KG manelefatem.
I'm one of the officials who administer this bill or this uh, legislation.
Ki emongwa ba officiri basediza nanlita ba ya bili ena.
I'm also one of the officials who has started the process of amendment since 2013, if I'm not mistaken.
Ibeleki emongwa ba tubatka dilense bedzo ena ya hutlisa di peto, biling ena huta ka 2013.
The bill went through many phases.
Bili ena isesa ma ileme hato eme ngataha holo.
And we're hoping that by now.
Nerinere tse pile hori kana koyena.
The bill will have been passed.
Etla be, ine etla be se ifiti si.
But because of our ever problems that we encounter.
Impa kaliba kala matata aman au hukopanu nglo ona.
It was never approved by the then president.
Ha, ikaba ya ananelo, ki mu presidente wa nako ye.
If I'm not mistaken, it started during the era of Minister Peterson.
Ha, ve ki hoopula hantle tabaina ifka dilena konyali tona Peterson.
When he saw it feel that the legislation needs to be amended.
Ha hunehu bo noa twa ke hoya urumulawa, na ona uluke la ufetu.
But as the administrator.
Impa jolo kamutama isi.
Myself and the colleagues.
Na le basebesi moro baka.
There are five of them, they're on my extreme left.
Bateman, Baba Shano.
We are from national office.
Re toa, kwanu officinyana ha.
Some are here from the provincial office.
Babanki ba mona provincei.
The commitment is to support the parliamentary process.
Buitlamo ki uteheza sebedoya Parliament eh.
As you all know, that now it's in your hands.
Juali kaha letseba ro, juali tabaina imazo aluna.
We did what we could do. We consulted from 2013.
Estaliri bua lese chaba huta ka 2013.
I think the last consultation was 2018.
Hubuisana lese chaba, keta la utkatela, hueza hesaka 2013.
2018.
2018.
Yeah, and then Free State was also consulted.
Free State taliona huile hakopano taliona, humkama ikutu abatu.
There was a week.
Hu bilalebeke.
That was set aside for the consultation in Free State.
Ene ibe hetuka tu, koba kenso, humkama ikutu abatu mona Free State.
The comments and inputs were taken from Free State.
Di tahi, so liditi, liditi siyo, dile tankuwa hoso ba ai ba Free State.
And all other provinces.
Ikastana li di profensi tedi ngkaofe.
So as the official, I'm here to make a commitment again to the public.
Juali kamusebezi wa alefapa ki mona hapé hutla etabuitlamo secha ba.
That let's support our parliamentary process.
Hori haritihete nditsebedo tsa Parliament eh.
So that this law or this bill must be finalized.
Hori bili ena ili ikone hupetela.
Honorable members, I just want to make one or two.
Di totse chabani ki ba tla fele hosa isha dinthatepe di.
I pick up one concern from one of the traditional leaders, if not traditional authority member.
Ki leka utwa engwe ya ditaba hoso ho, eh, mu etapeli waruna waseto.
With the concern of how will they be trained to enforce the law.
Ya huruna ba tarupelo, juangueza hurumulau peta halé.
Plans are there already.
Meralo isese ilite.
Commitment is there from the department.
Buitlamo hoso alefatem bute.
That will train those officials that deserve to be trained.
Ho ta upela ba, nu bo seba lukela ngi tulpelo.
And I need also to assure Mr. Mukwena, if I'm not mistaken.
Ki lukela onitefa le tanta, Tmukwena hayba ki sa fosi.
Nobody's going to be given enforcement power without a proper training.
Ha hunamuti atla fuama, ta au peta, ta sena hasa humpelo kabutla.
We know the Criminal Procedure Act detects otherwise.
Rea tseba hori Criminal Procedure Acti, isese taka tela eh unwe.
So will provide necessary support and training.
Kanitretla fana katihezo liditupelo.
To everyone to assist in enforcing the law.
Ho bo seba lukela ngorumulau peta ha.
It is also a commitment from us as a department.
Ki buitlamo hapé hoso huruna relalefapa.
Will reach out from both provincial, local and national level.
Re tla fi tela eh, di makala ana apuso la, la profensi, le la di, le la se le hai.
And also work with our municipalities at all those levels.
Me re tama ilo Maspalabarona, me hatu ye nukaofela yo.
To provide training.
Ho fana kadi tulpelo.
Awareness.
Di, di trokomediso.
To all landowners and the community at large.
Ho bo seba ilimbema mobule secha ba kakakare.
So in short, honorable members, I'm only assuring the members that.
Ki le netifaleza hori.
We are here to support and make a commitment to the public that we are here to support the process.
Re, rea tsepi sa horu mona hule tiheta, luitlama husecha ba hori, rea tiheta tsebedi ena.
And we are taking concerns that they are raising.
Me di ngongo re hota bona, re di, re di elatlo.
Bialebo.
Thank you. Thank you KG.
Ki kupama spala ose oto bua kadi nklata pahuniya di sebedi toto secha ba sibuylenkatso.
Eh, thank you very much, Chair President.
Bialebo, ha holo mudira stulo.
Let me take this opportunity to also eh, thank you for your presence here.
Eriki nke mu nyetla ona, ki lebu ebutemba ha omona.
For this important eh, process of the public hearing.
Sebedi ena ya bushrokaya hunonya secha ba.
On a so much important issue affecting our communities.
Kancha ebushrokwa ha holo eh, aman secha ba saro.
And I also wish to express my apology. And I also wish to express my apology for arriving late earlier when you've already started.
Ki batla okupa tsharelo kaufila gamorau hunaku.
It was not out of any malice but challenges that we encounter as councillors.
Inese gamo hopulo mu bi kapo jalo eh ki kaba kalama tatera chabaninlo na ralibu ma councila.
Let me also express my appreciation and recognize the presence of uh our traditional leaders in our midst, all those that are here. And all members of the community of Tabamukutanyana and various associations and uh community groups that are here.
Ki lebu ehape wetapili basetu boti mona leme hatlo efapa fapaning kahara nkuena le tulonyera le moyon.
And also officials of uh the municipalities that are here and uh the relevant department that is here.
Leba ofisiri babo maspala ba fapaning le ma fapa ba temona.
Without wasting time, Chairperson, let me try to uh respond to few issues that have been raised. With regard to the municipality of Malutia Pofu.
Ntelu senyana koe reki lekeho arabe la din tlenze malate pamisi twemona mababi.
Perhaps before that I should indicate, yes Chairperson, I was about to do that. My name is Paratlane Mutlohuun. I'm the, I'm the speaker of Malutia Pofu municipality.
My name is Paratlane Mutlohuun kesepika rasa Malutia Pofu.
Yes, Chairperson, thank you very much. Uh there was an issue raised here about uh the area called Bloodbeck.
Hunare ncha epamisi twemona katuloya Bloodbeck.
Yes, indeed, we, we, we are aware of the lease agreement that exists between the municipality. And the company called Bloodbeck Development Company.
Eh reateba kalis agreementi eh temba kenza maspala le kampani ewe sebeza ene ehirelemo.
However, there are challenges with regard to this agreement.
Impa honani pepeto mababili tumelanu ewe ya, ewe ya tsebezo.
When we got to office, uh I was personally made aware because matters pertaining to that area were brought to my attention.
Ha ki fila ofisini kileka fuma na hule ten di tabazeo meki lukela odisikasika.
There was some engagement between myself and the municipal manager and one of the shareholders of that particular company.
Ibele ten kuisano kapokopano pa kenzaka le municipal manager le meyediwa kampani ewe sebeza mou.
The municipal manager sometime last year had already written to our uh lawyers. To really try to terminate the existing contract.
Municipal manager onaliki le hube isana le buramula obaro na huleka ho kisapelezo contracti ewo.
Yes, citing, citing all the challenges uh regarding the issue of the forest there.
Alika ho kotza din tla tse ngatanyana tse mababili di pepeto setenseba kwan ki mirumo.
Uh all the issues uh affecting the, uh regarding the fire and, and uh other issues raised by Wanda Timlangeni here.
Le din tso tse mababili miruleme lo se pamisi twenki Wanda Timlangeni mona.
And Madanamolu also indicated that there's uh, that the matter is even compounded also by the involvement of another. Well, he said, Muteipiza Morena, waba holoke, uh who also is.
Tabaina ense huriso hape hape likiri nitote buenki Ntati Morena waba holoke.
So I must say that uh this issue is receiving our attention.
Meki tshansi kini tifaja ro tabaina ranze rasi kasi kanali ona honajwali.
Uh going to the other issue was the issue of the DDM or District Development Model.
Emwe tabaineli tabaya DDMo in the District Development Model.
Moho bonaha langrumshomo hao na jwala haeso kabai jela isebeta hantle in our district.
Right now it hasn't been properly implemented.
Indeed, it's still a challenge that uh the district together with the local municipality has to deal with.
Mehe ena ki pepeto ewu maspala le district municipality lukela huseka shavana leona.
Uh the other issue was about the electrical lines ite tzezamulo eh mapulasimani tzezandispaka tte katala.
Another issue was the issue of the electrical cables that were causing the fires.
Perhaps one, what one can say with regard to this one is that we'll have to talk to Eskom since this is happening within our jurisdiction.
Mehe se ungasibuankoratla lukela hube isana le Eskom khasena se tzaala karulonyaro ona.
Unfortunately, we are, we are engaged in negotiations with Eskom in terms of uh they are taking over the services of electricity in our.
Ranze hube isana le Eskom hori inge kaboe tzelepi leka di tsebele toto panoya mtlakase maspala waru.
So we'll, 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 we'll take this up with them during, in the course of the discussions.
Ka ho heretla kancha ena hube isane lebo onaka yo ona hanzea tzelepi.
There was an issue about the alignment of the municipal bylaws with this bill or the act itself.
Hubele ten le pamiseya tsi siyo ya hori di municipal bylaws di zama isane li ditoko tza bili ena.
As the municipality, we are in the course of reviewing our bylaws and establishing those that are non-existent at the moment.
Eh honajwala ralemaspala remochi ngoa hushawala di bylaws za ro na le hori regenyele tze tse sioka hara zon.
So this means that in the process, there will be a lot of consultations with the community. Because we cannot approve this uh bylaws without the inputs from the community.
Sena hesbolela horu lukela huikama hanyalise chaba hobani raluke la fuma nama ikutuabo na meiri keki ra pasisa di bylaws tse na nklay liditsi siyo kapodi peiso tza bo.
So kama antzaman, there will be a process, a consultation as well with regard to all the bylaws the maspala lukela huvana zon.
So therefore there will be the process of consultation with all the processes that the municipality will undergo.
Because hunale hovalepaha di issuesi ka ishiyena ya, ya melo together with other environmental issues.
Hunale palama noya tsebezo kadi tabazenata uh tikulu olime lo.
I must indicate, I, I had a session with one gentleman that Emutsumi is sitting here.
Ki ibilele kuisano lendata se Tsumi ya neyadi tse mane.
It's Mutsumi rather.
Ndatemo Tsumi tsharelo hakupi.
My apologies. Yes. One of the things that we are suggesting is that we should have a summit on these environmental issues because.
Emwe ya di tsi siyo za ro na ki hori kare kaba le summit tikari tabazenata tikulu ho bani.
We have so many organizations, NGOs and so on that are dealing with environmental issues. And now they are not talking to each other. So our view.
Eh shabane lidita bazena za mollo mehe hadisebe di sane mo kapoha omomahan.
So our view is that there should be common uh understanding and common uh one plan. That will be facilitated by the municipality so that we have one plan in place.
Ute si soya honako hobetengza ma isano mole moralo otswana ota wete lezuki maspala okaufela rebe maymona tswana ngazi.
There was an issue about the vacancies in the fire unit of the municipality.
Hubele ten tabaya di heo lefa penla zamolo maspala.
Uh I must indicate that indeed as the municipality, uh renality challenges with regard to uh, uh the number of. Or the required number of the personnel in that unit.
Ki tshansi ki buen eti horu na le pepeto mababili lenani la di heo tse tshanzo omukwalo akapo ba ten lefa penlo.
I think it's public knowledge that this municipality because it has been in, in the news for all the wrong reasons for, for some time now.
Ki dumela horu bo seba ziba hori eh maspala onanale ma sedinyane eh kata bazena mbitene diyetaala.
And this municipality is very much challenged, especially when it comes to the finances.
Me maspala ona onanale di pepeto tse holo mababili tabazadi chalete.
However, there's a will and commitment to turn the situation around. And uh I must say uh at this point that we appreciate and acknowledge uh the fact that. There's some sense of hope ebonaha langi leten with, uh with regard to the new administration leting maspala waru.
Impa helha olijwalo honalebi itlamo ba ufe tu la maawa. Mehe honale tsepo ya hori din to di tlan tla falahomaspala in waru.
Eh hola abana la taba hape ya police stationi ma ni ekwatzing Harris Smith in Tabazoo.
There was also an issue of a closed down police station in Tabazoo.
We, we have noted this matter. We will be taking it up with uh the station commander around here. Ruto orna wetsala. And the MMC responsible is here, so he will start the process, yeah, yeah engagement.
Uh bule tava ewo meheretla hube isana le station commander mehretla amahanyali MMC wapulukehoya se chava kadi tabazenata.
And by the way, uh the MMC has already instructed officials ite tse guanosarunata maspala to take uh the contact details. See and further details from people who raised some of the issues here.
The MMC has already requested the contacts of the, all the people who raise these issues here.
There was an issue about libraries, the library in Harris Smith especially.
Hubele ten tabaya librarya Harris Smithi kaupoleha.
I, I should indicate, hori the issue of library, libraries has always been an unfounded mandate. Homaspala waru na Malutia Pofu.
Eh ki tshansi ki shaki se hori tabaya library inesa tsetu kadi chalete homaspala waru na wama Lutia Pofu.
It's actually the responsibility of the provincial department, yeah, Azan Culture.
Ki musebeti wale fapala province la Azan Culture.
In the past, there's been a working relationship between uh the municipality and the department, the provincial department. About the management of these libraries.
Kapija na maspala le province ne basebedi sana kata bayataolo ya lefa karolo ena.
But everything is said, uh the department has since written to the municipality to say that they are ready to take over. All the services of the libraries in the municipality.
Eh hajjwal le province i ngoleta maspala hori iseli maymona hukanka wika rabelo ba di library.
However, with regard to the issues it raises about the internet and so on. We, as the municipality, I, I believe we still have the responsibility to take that up with the uh relevant provincial department. So that those services can be available for our use.
Kadi tabazadi interneti ki dumela horu ralemaspala retla din tseza bili provinceing hobe ika rabela ngofana kate.
Uh Datemukwena talked about issues tha, 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 tha macho achiling. Actually, he, he made mention of the, the house, the water shack in Mabulela. That is in what 2018.
Also talked about the bent shack in Mabulela.
Uh unfortunately, there were two incidents of bent houses on the same night or day.
Kabo ma di ma be hubele ten di ketalo zepe editahu chaha budulo.
Where people lost their lives.
Mo ebamba tvaile baslo kahala.
In Mabulela, as he indicated, a child and her father uh passed away as a result of the fire.
Jaleka hasa shalo sita Mabulela muana lintate bayile baslo kahala.
In, in what 33 in Mandela Park, uh the mother and her one-year baby also bent inside the house there.
Mandela Park one uh what.
What 33.
What 33 eh menu wanaha elebona bayile baslo kahala.
And after those two incident, incidents, there has since been a few other cases of uh bent uh houses in other waters as well.
Kamoradi ketahalo tse tsepe di hubele ten tse din tse maloanyana tse ileza etahala za ho chaha.
So there seemed to be an increase in the, in the incidents of, of, of uh this disasters in our area.
Hube onaha la hule ten kekeze odikodu enzena tulonyaro.
Uh there was also a comment about the conditions of the roads in our area.
Hubele ten hape eh peiso kapo tsi siyo kata bayama emo ami bila eh tulonzaron.
Re lukela wasalos hori di tse lazaruna di mbu eh honorable Chairperson.
We must confirm that our roads are bad eh honorable Chairperson.
And unfortunately, as the municipality, we are really in a, in a very difficult situation. Where we don't even have the necessary fleet to attend to this uh bedrooms at the moment.
Eh ma emo ama be azadi chalete harana lebo honi ba hori rekasho komeladi tabazenata.
We are, we are looking at ways uh that, uh and, and where we can access perhaps some, some, some funding.
Galika ho, ho sheba sheba mshomo mesodi rekafuma na nditsezo zadi chalete.
So that we can attend to, to these roads.
Elu hori retebe horarola tabazenata me bila.
Uh I think the issue of the, the education awareness campaigns and trainings has already been talked to by many other speakers.
Eh ki dumela horu tabazadzi biso kapo matla fazale se di lidikuetsi so di se di buwe kapili ki baban.
Uh all the other issues, Chairperson, that have not talked to, we have noted. We will make follow-ups on some of them and then we will report uh to you as, as, as you have instructed.
Tse din tza di nitote ubuen kazona laha ki safana kadi kara belo zatona impase pi oku. Redli redila dele hana kwenzi.
Allow me, Chairperson, at this moment to really thank you for, for, for having uh provided Malutia Pofu. With this opportunity to host this uh important public hearing.
Ki kupama dulas tulu ki olibo ka hori dumela ralema Lutia Pofu hori ibeki runaba tswiren kapano ena.
It is our wish as the municipality as well that this should not be the last one.
Ki takazo aru na ralemaspala hori iskawa ketele ya hukatela ena.
These are the kind of uh activities and processes that really enhances the democracy that we, we talk about so much.
Ena ikiemi nyami sebe tse lidikezo zen tle tzeza ungraboni horu democracy eno buankaya na ya sebeza.
It, it, it makes sure that we, we, we keep, uh we, we get closer to our people at all times.
Eh reata meza ba tumbaru na kadi nakozole.
And eh reza hori retebe ho ba accountable and responsible.
And it makes us responsible and accountable, Chairperson.
So on behalf of the municipality of Malutia Pofu, I would like to thank you. Le inputsika ufe la le chabasaro ona se tli lemguano hasine sifuma na memo ya hori setlo yaza. Lisetlo kenya leksoho leso ona biling ya bosha okaini. Ttabazenata hangata kana kongore duta dido hule guanaloro.
I would like to thank you, Chairperson, and all our communities that are here to give inputs. Because some of these activities are happening far away from where we are.
Thank you very much, Chairperson.
Kialibo. Ah holo mudilas tulu. Kialibo, Speaker.
You are coming. Yeah. We don't underestimate your coming, Speaker. And the beauty about it, all these issues as raised, we are leaving them in capable heads. They will find space to be in the council agenda. That's the exciting part of it.
Din tlatzol sepa misitwe mona eh itasikase karealewa.
Okay. So at least they have heard from the Speaker himself.
Kabo kalishonono likutwezo huse pikara kabolu na.
And what I like about his responses, he is taking responsibility.
Mehe se ukeserati lenkadi kara belo zahae kuhonka wika rabelo.
And committing himself.
Lu itlama hahae.
To follow up on these issues.
Hola del la din tatenata pamisi twi.
That leadership.
Ki bo etapili hebo.
We thank you, Speaker.
Raoleboa holo Speaker.
Then we are on the last item of our agenda.
Ren kenya okatela yale na ne la tsebezo kajeno.
Uh is around the closing remarks in the way forward by my colleague, honorable Bryant.
Ki di tsharelo le di, le manze ahukwalo kasa tse chabane Bryant.
After that, I'll give you a very nice announcement, a special one.
Kamu ka humoki tale fati biso emo nati hadi.
Thank you very much, Chairperson.
Thank you very much, Chairperson.
Kialiboa mudilasstulo.
Chairperson, I think I'd like to just begin my closure by thanking everybody who's come out today and has sat through this hearing.
Ki lakata hukalapili kaholebo ha bo sebatile mona lehukatali zatika ofela le nzele dutika rakopano ena.
I think the inputs were fantastic and there's also a genuine interest from people who stayed to see and hear what other people have to say.
Ki tsepa hori ki nahanawo di peiso zanla dutuha etzhanle meho bona heti hape honale chassehoya batu horba mamela wawrona batu babamba re.
And I must actually make mention of that little girl who was sitting over there for four hours on the chair, very quietly by herself, very, very good.
Ki bueka mura di nyane na aduti mona esali adulamo na atutitu aitswerehandla.
Very well behaved.
Uitswerehandla ho.
So all of these inputs that have been made today.
Di ti siño zena se ulidi nze mona kaofela kajenu.
Will be taken into consideration by our committee first.
Di tasekasekwa ki komitiaro na pele.
Then they will go to the National Council of Provinces.
Ebe difete la honational council of provinces.
And then after that, if all goes well, it will go to the president for sign off.
Kamu ramonu hadi nto di zama ya handla di tla fete la homo presidente ora alo saena.
Now, I think a lot of the inputs that were made today and similarly to the inputs from yesterday.
Ki nana di tla isote nze mona kajenu ze tshana nleza ma obani murnenrelite.
Some of them referred specifically to the bill.
Zee di nza tonadi nedikama hante handla libili.
But there were a lot of comments that referred to other things and responsibilities of other government spheres.
Tela hunanalin tlatsedi nze nindibuaka di ntlate amama fapa amang amuso.
And it has been very good to have the local representatives present today to answer those questions.
Me hubilehutla holo hoba lema leba emedi mamaspala ho ba arabele di nklenseo.
And I know you've said that there is a new hope in your in your municipality.
Me kiya kiya zeba lidehona letsepo eh nchammaspalenwalu.
We just hope that that translates into into the actions that are needed.
Re tsepa hori seno seta ipona hataka di ke.
It's not nice to hear stories about children burning to death because they don't have access to to fire hydrants.
Ho haumona tuhu kwa hori bana bashoka halahobane basana di tebeli to za hutimamul.
But again, I think I'm going to close there and say thank you to everybody who's come along and participated.
Ki kwa le hape kahore iki lebo ha bo seba bilen ten leba bilen li seabo.
Every single one of your comments will be taken into consideration by our committee.
Di ti siñoza emoli emongholona di tla di tasekasekwa ki ronarale parlamenta.
I'm gonna hand back to our chairperson for her announcement.
Ki kutlise temara po holo mudilasstulo huetza di tvi iso.
Thank you so much, dear colleague.
Kialiboa handate.
And I must, you have been thanked, all of you.
Ki lelebo ha kaofela halu.
For being such a great audience and attendees.
Ore ibeli sechaba se se senisitswerehandla hakanakana.
Eh, the team at that corner there on my left.
Se chopasanis edutimani kalitohonlele thihadilaka.
They're saying they've organized something good for you outside.
O barabashopiste tabazemo nateham pikantle.
But their request is that they are going to take you rows by rows.
Fela batalinka kade mechatelo jale kamela.
I believe they are already lining up to do that.
Ki tsepa obatwasente ba imekamela hueza jalo.
Then you can have your lunch, take your bags, whatever you want to do.
Ibeli jadijota lo na kapahaiba obatlautama katona hunsohuluki.
And then have a safe journey back home.
Li kutlele haye lebulukehi.
Arrive alive.
Li fili lepeela.
Be safe.
Bulukehang.
Were still under COVID times.
Resantena relitlasama yemo akovi.
You know what to do.
Leateba hori sehulukela moseta kisi.
Thank you so much. The meeting is adjourned.
Kialiboa koopano inayuko etu.